All right, we have a quorum, so let's go ahead and get started. Today's work session here on the Land Development Code. Today is, what, February 5th?
Yes.
5th, 2020. We have a quorum present. We're in the Boarding Commission Room. It is 9:12. We're going to go from 9 to 11. We're going to take a break at 11. We'll reconvene at 1. We'll go from 1 to 5 today. This morning, we're going to talk about water, watershed, and non-zoning matters. And then this afternoon, we'll be talking about primarily mapping, I guess. Why don't you go ahead and start your presentation?
Thank you. Good morning. Mayor and Council Brent Lloyd with the LDC team. And today, as you indicated, Mayor Adler, we're going to dive into some important non-zoning topics. And just by way of, can I get that? Just to kind of roadmap our presentation today, we're going to start out this morning with some environmental updates that are going to focus on drainage regulations, water quality, and that will include discussion of our graduated impervious cover proposals, parkland dedication, and tree protection. And we're going to talk about some important refinements to the site plan process, including the Board of Adjustment special exception related to housing capacity. And this afternoon, we're going to dive into the preservation incentive, the graduated calculation of Florida area ratio, the house scale testing and FAR calibration, including some modeling that I think everyone will find interesting. We put a lot of effort with Peter Park, our consultant, into preparing some robust and illustrative zone models that we hope you all will get something out of. And additionally, we'll talk about multi-unit and mixed use additionally with some modeling and a focus on compatibility as well. And between each one of these topic areas, we'll pause for questions. And with that, we'll turn it over to Matt Holland from Watershed.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to be talking about three broad topics. The first is, it talks about graduated impervious cover for one to six or more units of residential development, and this is talking about, those are eligible for the streamlined development process. Secondly, I'll be talking about updates to the streamlined regulations for residential development to complement that first bullet. And then thirdly, briefly, I'll update you on the removal of code changes requiring SOS ordinance amendments. So this first slide is slightly overwhelming. It's basically showing the seven different council amendments that are related to the topics that I'll be discussing. Generally, they talk about, council has important requests involving impervious cover levels with these residential properties, and showing how they would increase with increasing numbers of units, and I'll, we'll go into more detail. We can always refer back to the slide if you like. Also, you're wanting to look at preservation of existing housing stock in some different ways, and also ensuring positive drainage outcomes. So again, these are seven council amendments that you wanted us to weave into the code. So our proposal is as follows, and in a second, I'll show you a table that's going to further illustrate this. But basically, you wanted what we're calling graduated impervious cover. And so as the number of units increases in a residential project from one to, one to two to three to four and on up, that would incrementally increase with the number of units. And this new system supports the preservation incentive that you requested. And it does not actually apply to the very smallest lots, the R1 and R2C properties, which can still, which we're still proposing can go up to 65% impervious cover. This is a very small number of lots, and they are very, again, small in size. Secondly, we're, council was requesting that one unit developments be capped at 40% impervious cover, and so we're proposing with this scheme to have those new units, that 40% impervious cover limit apply to new construction, as in tear down and rebuild projects, and which importantly would mean that if a project already exists, if a structure already exists at the time of the code, those folks would still be able to expand to their current entitlement of 45% impervious cover. But that would still have a meaningful impact on impervious cover overall, over time, as some homes will be replaced by brand-new homes, and will come in at 40% impervious cover instead of the current limit of 45. And then we're also, per the council direction, we're increasing the R4, missing middle zone to a maximum of 45% impervious cover. And we'll show you how that works with our scheme with drainage. And then fourthly, projects with more than 50% impervious cover or 5,000 square feet of impervious cover, either one, either of those thresholds, will be subject to new drainage requirements, and we'll go into more detail two slides from now. So let me start, so this is a table which kind of walks us through this. Again, the very smallest zones are the properties that are the smallest of the R1 and R2C properties. We're not proposing changes to those. Those are lots that are, say, 3,500 square feet and smaller even, and so limiting those to 40% or 45% impervious cover would result in a quite small opportunity to develop. And so we're not proposing changes to those. And the R2A and B, that's the vast majority of properties that we're talking about here. That's the single and two-unit homes of today. We're recommending that the, if you tear down and rebuild a house, you have a new project, it would come in at 40% impervious cover, per council direction. And if you had an existing home, those folks could still go from, say, 38% up to 45, or 42% up to 45. That would be as they can do today. And if they had, if they preserve an existing home, per the preservation bonus, they could actually go to three units with those properties. And so you see that in that column. That's the 50% with the asterisk, achievable only with the preservation incentive. On the R3 side, it just clicks on up. You can see that each one incrementally goes up. And then R4, which is, you know, the first of the main missing middle zones, if you come in with one unit in that, in those zones, you're going to have to stick with 40%. One of the council amendments asks that we, asks that we have new projects that come into a missing middle zone that only propose one or two units, that those be not, you know, not, you wouldn't have a 50% or 55% impervious cover, a single home, that we want to cap those at 40 or 45. And then RM1, that's the most intensive missing middle zone, that goes up to 60. And you see a dark, bold line through there that goes between three and four units, and that's actually, that's actually delineating the above 50% impervious cover threshold, and that's going to be an important thing for the next slide and the next proposal, which has to do with drainage. Anything above that, or below, as it were, above impervious cover, that line is going to have to do, have to make additional provisions for drainage. So this is our streamlined regulation drainage plan, drainage proposal. And so you'll probably recall a lot of extensive discussion in our previous code discussions a year ago and beyond, where we talked about drainage certification for projects, for single-family and missing middle projects. And that was a difficult nut to crack, and we think that we've actually arrived at something that we've, that we're really pretty excited about, which basically says, there was a lot of discussion of, you know, would a drainage certification be done by an engineer, but then basically just filed and then be useful later on in case of issues? And, you know, who would, would staff be, would staff be reviewing that and inspecting that? And so we had not come to a good resolution. We think we have a good plan for that now. We're basically saying that if you exceed 50% impervious cover in your project, or you exceed 5,000 square feet of impervious cover on your project, then you're going to have to do a drainage plan. And so that drainage plan would be done by a licensed professional, so say, an engineer or an architect or a landscape architect. And that would be an official plan sheet that would be submitted to city staff for review and inspection, which was, which we've heard from council and the community was an important consideration. And so if you can stay under 50%, you're still going to have to comply with the plumbing code, still make sure that you don't flood folks around you, but you wouldn't have the same level of formal plan creation and review. But if you have something that's more intensive, then you would have to provide that drainage plan. And that would include a single home or a two-family home. This is not just applying to the missing middle, so that one of the, one of the council amendments was to consider, if you had a very large, single-family home or two-family home, you know, how would you handle drainage with that? Because those could have similar impacts to something that's a missing middle project with four or more units. And then, so if you, in a second, I'll show you a, basically a schematic, a diagram that shows this more visually. But basically, if you can show, to keep things simple, if you, and to come out with a good drainage outcome, we have made it such that if you can show that you can drain safely to a roadway, like a public right-of-way, or to a drainage easement, being in a creek or an official drainage easement, then you can basically, you know, direct your flows to that spot and go past that 50% limit on up to 60, depending on your entitlements, and move forward with your project with higher than 50% impervious cover. However, if you cannot show that you can drain safely to such a place, to the street or to a drainage easement, then you're going to have to limit your project to 50% impervious cover. And so again, I'll show you an example of that. This is an important new change. Let's see. And then, we also have, with this new simplified process, additional missing middle projects from 50 to 65% impervious cover will qualify for the streamlined regulations, and thus will not, we're not recommending that they be required to have water quality controls. This is going to be a small subset of this, but we can, and this is an important, we wanted to push this forward to council to discuss. We know that you're going to want to talk about it. But basically, that's an outcome of the proposal we have today. And then, we also say that if you're, so if you had a large-scale, single-family home or two-family home, and you had less than, we're a missing middle project, and you had less than 50%, but more than 5,000 square feet of impervious cover, you still have to, as I mentioned before, you still have to do a drainage plan, and you have to show that your drainage is not going to harm neighbors. So that's back to the, that important plumbing code provision that we have in the code today. And then one of your council amendments was asking us to review that plumbing code, which we are doing, and we're going to make sure that we, that that works well, and that we're going to strengthen it if necessary. And also, we are going to, and we are working very actively with the affected departments, the DSD, Watershed Protection, and the Code Department, to make sure we implement that smoothly. And then finally, one of the amendments was asking that we look at possibly increasing impervious cover beyond the 60% level, and then using GSI, which is green stormwater infrastructure, to mitigate those impacts. And staff did not feel comfortable or is not recommending that option, but we're very happy to discuss that if you like. All right, here's our schematic that kind of walks you through these new, this new drainage proposal. So for purposes of this discussion, these are, all six of these lots have been zoned RM1, and that means that they could theoretically go to 60% impervious cover. And so the direction of flow, and so Austin is, varies in topography, in some areas are quite hilly. And so we're going to, for the purposes of this diagram, we're going to show that this particular subdivision has, these three units at the top are kind of up slope, and the three units at the bottom are down slope, and so the drainage is going from top to bottom. So here it is, the drainage on the bottom, it's draining right to that street, or it might be a creek behind these, it just, you know, just varies in the project, it's very site-specific. But these projects are showing that they're draining right to a street where the water's going to proceed to a curb and gutter street and go on down into a storm drain system and out of the creek. These projects would, to simplify the process, these projects would be eligible to go to 60% impervious cover. They'd still have to do a drainage plan. The drainage plan shows how water proceeds, you know, from the back of their project, through the project, and onto the, onto the street in an orderly fashion, and those would be allowed to go to 60% impervious cover, or whatever their limit would be. Some of them are limited to 55. So these top projects are draining through their neighbors' projects, and so there's three different outcomes that we envision that they could, paths they could take or have to take. In the first case, these folks work with the downstream neighbor and purchase a drainage easement, and so through the other property's land. So that would be a safe way to get your water through your neighbor's property and have it proceed to a safe location to the street and storm drain system downstream. There will be cases, of course, where the downstream neighbor is not interested in providing that drainage easement and so forth, so that is not always available, but that is one outcome. If they did, in the second case, it's always possible that you could regrade your property to actually have the water proceed safely up to the street that's up slope, it just depends on your slope, and so forth, in site-specific fashion. So some of the time, you'll be able to get your drainage to move in a different direction. We do have cut and fill limits on these properties. It will not be, we do not want people, you know, radically changing their grade to meet this, this new proposal, this new requirement, so that, so there will be some limitations on your ability to do this. And then finally, in the third case, this particular lot, in our assumption, in this example, is unable to get an easement. They're unable to regrade their property, and so they are going to have to stick with 50% impervious cover. They could, they could increase the number of units up to whatever they could, they could work out with their land plan, depending on height and so forth, but they would not be able to exceed 50% impervious cover. They would still, of course, they're still draining to their neighbor like they are today, and so they would have to still comply with the plumbing code and, of course, the existing state law that states you cannot harm your, flood your neighbors.
Excuse me, I'm having requests for when this will be posted for the public, the presentation. Is that going to be happening soon?
This morning's presentation?
Yes.
We will, we will do what we need to do to make that happen later today.
Okay, so it won't be up now?
To post the PowerPoint. Yeah, we can post that right away.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And so that, and I'm sure you'll want to discuss this, these two proposals more, but that concludes the drainage and the streamlined regulations and graduated impervious cover portion of my talk. And then now briefly, I'm just going to mention that, per council request, the new draft of the code pulls out any and all code changes that would have required an SOS amendment. And so, but we did want to clarify that there will be some non-substantive clarifying edits in the SOS ordinance section, some new headings, some new citation updates and so forth, basically cleanups. So things like, in one spot, it talked about how in the Barton Springs redevelopment exception, that you, you know, in certain cases, you could use a sedimentation filtration pond to comply. We want to make sure that everybody knows that that's not just a sedimentation filtration pond, it's actually now going to be a green stormwater infrastructure compliant pond, per the new code. It's a little bit higher standard. So there are some cleanups there that we wanted to mention. So no substantive changes to SOS. And that is, I believe, it for my presentation, and we'd welcome any questions you have.
I have a question about the, let's see, it's the chart slide on page eight. So I'm just trying to understand what that means in relation to, in relation to the current SOS requirements. I see the star that says achievable only with new build, but I see that only for R4 and RM1. So R3, R2A, I mean, some of these others are higher than existing impervious cover requirements under SOS? So can you help me understand if, in these other zoning categories, if that increased impervious cover only applies if there's, if it's new build or what? Help me understand that.
These are the zoning impervious cover limits, and so a project would also be subject to the SOS ordinance requirements. So under standard practice today, it would be the more restrictive of the zoning or the watershed impervious cover limit that would apply to new construction. There are exceptions where the watershed impervious cover limits do not apply to certain types of projects. Today, there is an exception for one and two family homes. The streamlined regulations apply an exception to additional units, but those streamlined regulations will not apply in the Barton Springs zone. There is one narrow exception that could allow somebody to build multiple units under an existing provision of the SOS ordinance, but the primary takeaway is that the more restrictive of the watershed or the zoning limits would apply.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, you have to break that down for me a little bit more. So if a house is, you know, they've been grandfathered to a certain impervious cover, if they built a new house on that land because it's, you know, in the SOS area, they wouldn't be able to build as much. So are we maintaining that across all of these zoning categories?
The 40% limit for one-unit construction would apply across all of the zoning categories and all of the watershed classification areas. So today, if the, if the construction of a single-family home in the Barton Springs zone, then that home can go to its zoning impervious cover limit, because the watershed limit would have been applied at the time of subdivision. So under the proposed code, a single-family home in the Barton Springs zone would still be able to be built to its zoning impervious cover limit, which, under the graduated impervious cover proposal, would be 40% for new construction or 45% for an expansion of an existing home.
Okay, so, applied at the subdivision, talk us through that.
So when there's a new subdivision, the watershed impervious cover limits apply to the subdivision as a whole. In the Barton Springs zone, those limits range from 15% to 25% of the net site area, and a new subdivision needs to show that the total number of units and the assumed impervious, I'm sorry, not units, lots, the total number of lots and the assumed impervious cover per lot do not exceed the watershed impervious cover limit. So in the SOS, you're likely to have far fewer lots and more open space because of the low impervious cover limits. Then, once the subdivision is complete and the individual lots are constructed, they can build out to their zoning impervious cover limit, but the subdivision as a whole is still compliant with its watershed limit.
Okay, so then just help me understand the thinking of the asterisk for R4 and RM1 to say that that's achievable only with new build complying use, but the others don't or not?
That has to do with when a one, a new one-unit project is allowed in the missing middle zones, and for more information on that, I would ask Mr. Lloyd, or Ms. Gallotti.
The, Donna Gallotti, the, okay, so in R4 and RM1, a single unit is not a, in the base zone is not a permitted use. However, it is a complying use through another section of code. It's established as a complying use and can be rebuilt. So you can, if you have a single-family home, you can replace the single-family home with another single-family home, and that's what the two asterisks are referring to, is achievable only through that provision.
Okay. I'll just, one last question, and then I'll let it go. I do, I do want to talk about this further. So in the case where a, like, because we're lowering the, we're lowering the lot size now, so that there's more opportunity for subdividing than there is currently, because we're lowering it to 5,000, I think, rather from 5750, so a 10,000-square-foot lot could subdivide. So in that, in that circumstance, could they subdivide and then have units on each of the subdivided property, but not go back, not have to comply with the watershed impervious cover limits?
They would still need to comply with the watershed impervious cover limits for the subdivision, which means that even though dividing a 10,000-square-foot lot into two would be theoretically possible, given the minimum lot size.
Yeah.
It would probably not be achievable, given the watershed impervious cover limit, because the impervious cover for two lots would be too high. It would exceed the 15% to 25%.
Okay, so the 15% to 25% would apply in that circumstance?
It would.
Okay.
So when you see, when you see a new, when you see a lot in the Barton Springs zone, subdivided to be a SOS compliant subdivision, they usually have a large green space that's quite a, quite a large percentage of their project, and then they have some, you know, some lots in addition, or they have very large lots. So again, it's physically impossible to actually have, to blow past those impervious cover limits of SOS with the subdivision.
Okay. I could talk to you offline about the actual language. I want to make sure that that's really clear in the code.
Yes.
And so you don't have to, they should refer back to each other, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Further questions about this section? Kathy?
I do.
Allison?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your work on the localized flooding. I may have some questions on that as I absorb more in combination with the map, but I don't, I think my questions are going to be very sort of site-specific, and I don't need to address them here. I wanted to just kind of ask a real basic question. We've had concerns before about folks being able to rebuild their property as a single-family, and I just want to make sure that with this change to, for one unit with the impervious cover, currently, what is their impervious cover limit for a single-family, which is likely to be what's being rezoned to R2A or R2B? It's above 40%, correct?
That's correct. Generally, they are 45%. Typically, they're 45% today.
Okay, so if I own a single-family home in that area, and I am not, have not exceeded my 45%, and I have not gone above my 40%, I have a small little house, and I was hoping to save for five years and then rebuild a bigger house when I could afford it on my lot, but I'm not preserving my house, that was never my plan. My plan, when I bought my house, was to knock the little house down and build a bigger house. What rules do I need to follow?
So that would be, that would be, that would be case number one of two for, so if you wanted to replace the home and put in a new one, that would come in at 40% impervious cover with this, with this proposal. If you kept the existing home and expanded it, you could come in at 45%.
Okay, so I'm a homeowner who, when I bought my house five years ago, I planned to expand it and build a bigger house up to my 45% impervious cover. Under this plan, I will be constrained from doing that to the same extent of the 40%. I can only, I can only go to 40%. I cannot go to 45%.
That's, that is correct.
So I'm losing 5% of impervious cover that I could otherwise have built out. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, I just, I'm going to get questions on it, and I want to be able to answer what, what this is, what this is doing.
That is correct. It would limit it to 40%.
Okay.
Mayor, I think, some context on that point, if it's on the same point. I do want to clarify, though, on that, that generally with the square footage that we allow for a single home in the McMansion area, that the impervious, you can build out all of your square footage usually, and you're not taking up 45% impervious cover, right? Like, the house is usually one portion of it, and then the driveway, or a pool, or other things, or other components. I just want to make sure, and I'm not disagreeing with you here, I just don't want the message to get out that you, where we would, that if you had a plan, that you had a small house and you wanted to build out a house, we have said you can still build the same square footage of house, you just can pave 5% less of the lot, which might mean, when you, if you do a total rebuild, you can't have a circle driveway.
That's correct. This does not affect height. You could go up as opposed to, but you could not surpass 40%.
So the square footage of the house stays the same? It just might be some, some portion of the lot would be less paved.
That's correct.
And a pool doesn't actually count against impervious cover, because it absorbs the rain.
That's correct.
So you can still have your pool.
Right. That's very cool.
Sorry, then the driveway, scratch the pool part.
But there's still things that you might have wanted to do that you will not be able to do, and there may be circumstances where you would have liked to have spread your square footage out over longer. Again, I'm not advocating to do that, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what the implications are.
I would just point out that we, you know, we have, I've had many instances
I would just point out that we, you know, we have, have had many instances over the years where new regulations, McMansion, design standards, different regulations that the city has adopted over the years will create non-conformities. And in general, the rule for non-conformity is that you can't increase the degree of, of non-conformance. And so in this instance, the, the approach that Matt described actually does allow people to increase the degree of non-conformance by, by adding on to their house up to forty-five percent. So we did, you know, we, I think your points are well taken, Councilmember Alter, but we did, in looking at this, try to craft a middle ground proposal that would protect the rights of homeowners who just simply want to add on to their house, as long as it doesn't constitute a demolition and rebuild that's new construction.
Okay, and, and just one last point. There are large swaths of the city that do not fall under the McMansion requirements, that do not have the square footage requirements, which would now be constrained.
Lot of questions. I assume I'm not going to have an opportunity to ask them all, but I have a lot of questions about this. I've, I'm getting pretty much emails every day asking specific questions about specific properties in my district. I got some last night from North Loop. But I guess I want to, I wanted to just make a general point. You know, even after the first maps of Code Next, there was repeated assurances from this council that even though the number of units were increasing, there would be no increase in impervious cover. Now we're looking at what I would regard, what my constituents living in some of the various documented areas of localized flood identified problem areas are going to regard as of concern. And so I just want to note that. I also want to note that on first reading, I asked this council to consider passing an amendment that would have our staff committing to develop a plan for infrastructure improvements in just those areas where we are significantly upzoning them, to assure people that there would be the infrastructure supports they need to make sure if they're currently living in a, in a documented localized flood area, that they would have the infrastructure improvements they need. This council majority voted against that amendment. So you can imagine why the constituents in my district are concerned about these proposals that were, at the end of the day, made by council members whose districts aren't impacted by these changes as significantly. So I guess, Mr. Holland, knowing the huge cost, huge timeline that has been the case for the Guadalupe Storm Drain Project, still not complete, it's going to impact only two hundred houses, I guess I'd like you to help me understand why, what, and, and as we look at something like Shoal Creek, which the flood, as I understand, it impacts downstream properties, even though the water drains to the street, it still impacts downstream properties. I've driven through Hyde Park and Nuna and other areas on the day of the Memorial Flood. Many of those streets were impacted, so draining to the street is helpful if you don't, if you're not walking in the street, because the cars were submerged. I mean, there were some streets where cars were submerged. That's how high the floodwaters are. So we're, we're looking at a very substantial increase in impervious cover because many of those lots aren't built out to their existing forty-five percent. So you're looking at the redevelopment, a redevelopment will not just bring it up to beyond forty-five, I mean, it will allow them to go higher, but it's also likely that they're under that forty-five. And I want you to address some of those issues, those impacts.
Sure, and we, we greatly sympathize with folks who know that it takes a long time to get these projects done, and we're trying to accelerate those projects and we understand that.
More than a decade.
Sure.
And tens of millions of dollars, right?
So...
I mean, I think the Guadalupe Storm Drain was thirty million?
Forty, actually.
Forty?
Yeah.
And we now, as I understand it, need to acquire property to do that improvement, so...
That's, that's correct. That's probably the second-largest storm drain or public works project our department will have taken on, so it's a pretty complicated version. There's much smaller, more nimble projects, but that one's very complicated. I would say that, you know, the, so we, we often talk about the, you know, the differences between creek flood and local flood and lot-to-lot drainage issues. It is very confusing for, for the public and for almost anyone to talk through these issues. In our modeling, in our, with our, with our professional judgment, these marginal increases in impervious cover in these local flood problem areas are not, in our view, driving these drainage challenges. The, there's, there's a understandable perception that if you go from, and people are looking at the individual lot, okay, this lot goes from forty-five up to sixty. Wow, that sounds like a large, that's a thirty-three percent increase. But you have to look at the entire drainage area to that system, and what's happening is the roads are staying the same, most of the houses are staying the same, most of the zoning is not actually allowing increased impervious cover. So in a, in a, in the, in the Guadalupe Storm Drain, I mean, in that, in that problem area, I, I forget the numbers, I don't have them with me in front of me, but it's, it's less than two percent increase in that, in that, within that drainage area. We do not think that's going to drive extra drainage challenges, even though the water is going to the street and maybe the streets are overwhelmed. We're talking about, you know, one inch or a half an inch, et cetera, et cetera, within, for any given, given rainstorm and change potentially. We are very concerned that somebody at the more micro level is going to be putting water on to their neighbor and not, and not safely getting that water to where it needs to go. So that's why, that's why we want to have these drainage plans. That's why we're wanting to make sure that the plumbing code is strong. And obviously, we do need to continue our, our, our work on the, on, on improving the storm drainage system, you know, that we have an active project that is in the works, that's, you know, moving forward for the Guadalupe and many other areas of town.
Yet that, as I understand, was geared toward the current situation, not necessarily the impact of dozens and dozens and dozens of upzonings that would result in higher levels of capacity in other areas. So I just, I can't agree with the characterization that there are a few number of properties impacted. It's fifty percent of several of my neighborhoods that are looking at increases in zoning that would bump up the impervious cover. So it's not, it's not at all a minimal impact in several areas of town. And there were some specific, there were some specific lot-to-lot issues that were raised in North Loop and others, so I think maybe I'll just take those outside of, of this conversation. And I had another question that I'm missing for the moment, but I'll, I'll come back to it after one of my colleagues speaks.
I want to just briefly let everybody know that the presentation that we're giving this morning has now been posted online.
Would you, would you go further into the questions that Kathy was asking? Is it, is it de minimis, minimum impact, assuming that, that people build out to the, to the allowance? Or if people build out to the allowance, are we going to have a, a perceivable challenge?
So again, our, this is a great question, and these are, these are all extremely good questions, and we're getting the same questions from the public, and this is, thank you for, for this discussion. The, when, when you look at, we have to look at the, the impacts are in the aggregate. The, the impact from lot to lot is literally one lot to the other lot, and so those, those can go up. But, and, and that's why we are really focusing on the lot-to-lot and coming up with the drainage plan and, and making sure that those, those flow paths are, are really studied and, and reviewed and inspected as they go in. The, when you look at these, when we looked at the hundred and forty-seven local flood problem areas, and we talked about it yesterday, the remapping of those, and we did take out some, some missing middle zones along the flow paths of those creeks, just to be extra sure and extra safe, to not introduce new, 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 new units into those areas. But the, but the fact remains, in our professional view, when we look at it from an engineering perspective, that the flow increases are extremely small. And I know visually it looks much different, and, and you see these upzonings and you see what's going on, but when you run the numbers, the, the impervious cover in these areas is not going up more than one or two percent in, in, in these areas. It's true, so... Sure. So, so, you know, if it's, if it's at thirty-eight now and it goes up to forty or what have you, that's a two percent increase, but you can look at it, you know, several different ways from, you know, how, how much it goes up. But when you run those numbers, we're, we're just seeing, like we showed in that Del Corte case study in South Austin, that we're just seeing literally half an inch or an inch or what have you in these storms. What's happening is, in the very largest storms, most of the water is coming off of all surfaces during these large storm events, these floods. And so the, the changes in impervious cover are actually not meaningful, they're not, they're not causing meaningful changes in how the runoff responds in a very large event. Absolutely, it affects very small events, and we want, and so one of the reasons we have impervious cover limits and we're concerned about this, is we want to make sure that in the smaller rainfall events, that water soaks in the ground and it, it, it helps trees and retains soil moisture and so forth. We are very concerned about that, and that was one reason why we were supportive of council, saying, let's have the impervious cover entitlements on average, you know, be held, be held constant. But when it comes to flooding, that's just, it's just not as big a driver, and I think the, that's a super important thing. That's one of the things we, we talk about almost every time we, we meet with the public at this point.
Okay, so I think it's important for you to go there, because I go out to the neighborhoods and I talk to people in communities. They see an impervious cover change, or no impervious cover change, and they, they want to know about build-out and what happens relative to the flooding occasions that they have seen or driven through. And, and again, you're in front of us saying that when the engineers actually run the numbers, it's de minimis and not something that's perceivable in, with what you're recommending. Except that, you paid particular close attention to a lot-to-lot impact. So did you build in anything, does this code have anything to particularly, to address the, the lot-to-lot situation? I heard, I remembered, I could be remembering wrong. I could be wishful thinking, but, but was there a change in the code so as to allow a project to be red-flagged in mid-construction? If there was an, an impact from lot-to-lot and drainage that didn't exist before? Are there things in this code that address that concern about the lot-to-lot impact?
Yes, there are, Mayor. There, there are, we have a provision actually passed in 2017, it was a local amendment to the plumbing code, and it, and it requires that all of the single-family and duplex and so forth properties, and we would apply this to the missing middle as well, those cannot cause drainage impacts to their neighbors per this code provision. And so we, we, we have, we have already enforced that in several occasions. We're getting the word out that that is, that that exists and that you, that these projects cannot. So, so currently, we have that in there. There's some discussion of like, do we want to put it in the, in the drainage section of this code and not just in the plumbing code anyway? That's a separate discussion. But meanwhile, in this second edition of the, of the code proposal, we're requiring these drainage plans, which we think are going to greatly strengthen this provision and make sure that the projects that have the most intensity, most impervious cover slash higher than fifty percent impervious cover, come forward with it, with a, with a professionally overseen and submitted drainage plan that's, that's reviewed and inspected by the, by the city staff.
Okay, thank you. Natasha?
I have a couple of questions, actually. So I was just thinking during the course of the conversation, you said a couple of things that reminded me of my time in agriculture, and I keep thinking about our soil composition and the clay that is surrounding us, and just wondering, is the conversation about impervious cover sort of moot at some point, given our environment? Like, do we need to be taking the conversation about impervious cover to a higher level and be talking about real infrastructure, given that we can't do anything about the soil? And then the other thing I wanted to ask was, because I've never heard anybody talk about it, how do we enforce these regulations that we apply by way of impervious cover? Is there some mechanism we deploy to determine whether or not people are meeting, maxing, et cetera, with impervious cover requirements?
So, so that's a good, good two-part question. So yes, our soils do affect our drainage. Again, unless you have very sandy soils, it's, it's pretty unlikely that you're going to have the soil affect the runoff, you know, substantial or mitigate runoff during a flood. So we have clay soils. We don't, you know, except for along the river, we don't have very alluvial, fast infiltrating soils. So generally, we, you know, the soils are not working in our favor in terms of, but, but they don't act totally impervious either. So we're, we're, again, in the smaller rainfall events, you can manage the water and you can actually have it soak in, and that's what's happening in most of these smaller projects. I'm going to defer to DSD, my DSD colleagues about the enforcement.
Before we move on, if I may, I wonder if it might be helpful to have, you know, we keep having these conversations over and over, and I think to, to some degree, that part being glossed over, you know, the terrain that is the, you know, the clay soil that we live on, I wonder if we could add that in a way that's more substantive to the conversation with the general public? Because I frankly have never heard us discuss it. I think we make assumptions about people's level of knowledge with our terrain, but we never discuss it publicly. I think it's something we ought to spend a little more time talking to folks about, because that's something that no amount of infrastructure or impervious cover regulation can change. So I'd appreciate that very much if we could figure out as a body how we can, you know, have more open dialogue with the general public about that part, because it's important.
We appreciate that comment, and I think it is sort of integrated or buried within our engineering assumptions and so forth, but it's not usually the, you know, front and center on the conversation, so...
Yeah.
Your point is well taken.
Thank you.
And as to Brent Lloyd, LDC team, and as to enforcement, I, I think, and I'll ask Donna to chime in if she has other insights, but I think one of the most effective means of enforcement is the development review process. When people come in to modify, redevelop, add on to their structure, they've got to provide information that shows what they have on the ground. And if there's unpermitted or excessive impervious cover, that has to be remedied as part of the development review process. And there are, you know, certain small-scale improvements that maybe don't trigger that level of review, but any sort of meaningful development or redevelopment, the city will use the review process to catch those errors. And then if there's, you know, unpermitted construction that results in impervious cover, that can also be a code enforcement, trigger a code enforcement complaint and enforcement action. But again, I think the most effective enforcement is the development review process.
Thank you. Matt, I wanted to go back to my question yesterday about the parcels in Brentwood that were not scaled back in the review in the three hundred parcels. There's a lot of local area flooding. Can you, can you, so, and just to remind you that we're all concerned about the big flood events, but in neighborhoods with local area flooding, it's the one- to-two-year floods that can have huge effects when there are drainage issues. So it doesn't maybe rise to a citywide level, so it may not even garner much press coverage, for example, but it has certain impacts, absolute impacts on the people who are in that small storm in a problem area, and small storms can have a big effect. So I wanted to ask you again about Brentwood and why parcels in that problem area have not yet, maybe they will be, but are not so far on your list of three hundred.
So, so yes, thank you for that question. So we did, between yesterday and today, preliminarily look at that. We probably want to look at, you know, I haven't had a chance to look at it myself too, but our staff has looked at that. And that problem area, my understanding, well, again, we maybe could talk about this more offline and look at maps together, but it looks like a lot of that, that, that problem area was already in the floodplain, and we had already removed those missing middle possibilities because it was in that sort of Atlas, Atlas fourteen, five-hundred-year floodplain area. So I, I would welcome, you know, checking that out, you know, you know, offline and looking at it together closely.
Okay, that's, that's great. On the, on, you were talking about lot-to-lot flooding, and you said if a neighbor who's causing the flooding into your backyard, if you're a property owner, that if the backyard neighbor doesn't want to make any changes, then the property owner can regrade her, her land? I thought that the whole point of the lot-to-lot flooding requirement was that, in fact, those negative effects wouldn't occur, and that it was the responsibility of the property owner who's caused the flood into, say, my backyard. So I wanted you to kind of talk about that a little bit more, because it sounded like it was not a requirement.
So, so with those three possibilities, I think frequently, it's going to be not possible to, you know, so if you have a, you know, relatively steep slope, it's not going to be possible to take your house's water from, you know, if you're draining downhill to your neighbor in the back, it's not going to be possible to get it uphill into the street. So yes, you could have some lower-key regrading scenarios where it's flatter and you want to make sure that it's not getting back into your neighbor, but, but if you, if you can't do that, you're going to have to limit to fifty. So, so we're definitely...
Okay.
So we're definitely wanting, we're wanting to make sure that we, this is an additional, you know, protection that we didn't have in the previous draft of the ordinance that we're hoping is going to really help in these scenarios.
I hope so too, and that sounds great. But I was just focusing on who shares the responsibility for paying to make sure that the downhill neighbor isn't inundated by changes above them? And so do we not have some kind of requirements in the city that can be triggered to require the partnership and the payment or not?
Well, the new project would be, might need a correction if I'm wrong here. The new project is going to have to show that it is compliant and that it is producing an acceptable drainage outcome. So the downstream neighbor is not going to have to contribute or chip in. They're, we're wanting to protect the downstream neighbor. And if so, the downstream, so remember, in some of these cases, the water's already coming through for 50 or 80 years or whatever this subdivision has been there. Water is schlepping through these people's properties. So they may be motivated to say, you know what, we want to, we're happy to have you purchase a drainage instrument through our property so we can get that water through and we won't have the flooding we're already experiencing, you know, as you're building this new project. But in some cases, people would not feel comfortable with that, and that's their private right. And so then that property would be forced to either figure out a new grading solution or barring that, they would have to retain the 50% level.
The neighbor that you were referring to that could say no was the one who was affected by the downstream water flow?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then as part of the recommendations, do we talk about swales and berms and dry creeks? We're not talking about channeling through tunnels? We maybe could talk about a French drain or something that would allow the water that's running off to be retained in the soil?
That's correct. And so what we're going to do is we are going to add a new criteria manual entry for this issue of lot-to-lot drainage. And so we're going to give some examples of solutions, but we're not going to prescribe them. I mean, basically, it's going to be the engineer or whoever is working on this, the licensed professional is coming up with the drainage plan or even not drainage plan. If you're under 40, I mean, if you're under 50 and under 5,000 square feet of impervious cover, you're going to still be required to not flood your neighbor. So everybody's on the hook for making sure these things don't happen. But in the case of where you have a drainage plan, that's even, that's an even more, you know, scrutinized version of that.
Okay. And just to explain my reaction when you said the 45 or 48% to 50 is only a 1% or 2% increase. It's 1% or 2 percentage points, but 45% increase to 50% is actually an 11% increase in volume. And a 45% to 60% increase in impervious cover is a 33% increase. And so my point is that people are hearing the lower number thinking that that's a volume or a total impact, but it's actually not.
And we completely agree with the math on the impervious cover. If it goes from 45 to 60, that's a 33% increase if you look at that way. When you do the modeling, though, it doesn't literally mean there's 33% more water coming off. I think that's the disconnect. I think people are assuming that, you know, understandably, that if you're going up, you know, it's sort of a linear relationship in both cases. It's just, that's just not the way it works in terms of like water retention, antecedent moisture condition, all these different things that go into a flood. It's just not, we're not literally producing the same, you know, sort of response in runoff as we are as impervious cover goes up. Clearly, there's more runoff coming off of more impervious sites. But as you, but in the flood level, it becomes, it starts merging and becoming closer. So anyway, it's a complicated discussion. I'm happy to give more detail if the council wants to see more on this. But it's going to come back to something similar that I presented on with the Del Certo scenario.
But it is a third, a third increase in impervious cover?
In impervious cover, that's correct. If you did go from 15 to 60 on that particular lot, then once we start looking at the whole sub-drainage area to a particular point, you have to look at roads that don't change. You have to look at properties that aren't zupzoned within that area. And so when we talk about the local flood problem areas and how much they've changed, we, in these neighborhoods, we're not seeing 33% increases in impervious cover. We're seeing 1%, 1.5% and so forth. And so we're happy to take, you know, dive into some of these examples because we know that people are concerned. I probably would be concerned if I were in one of these folks and I wasn't, you know, living and breathing this stuff like I do every day. So it's a good conversation.
That's why I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about it a little bit more because that is definitely happening. And then my last question, Brent, you were talking about the unpermitted structure identified through the plan review. If we're doing, and also like flood mitigation and the different things about a lot, if we are going to do a streamlined or simplified site plan, will we miss some of these important elements?
That's a good question. So I think the limited site plan process that, as we've defined, would be if it's outside the limits of construction and there's existing non-conforming conditions, then that would not be subject to the review unless it was determined to be a significant threat to safety or the environment. So that essentially codifies largely the existing practice for site plan exemptions, but it builds in a level of discretion and judgment on the reviewer's part to not allow the limited site plan in instances where it's going to have a major impact. But if it's a building permit project or a project that, you know, where the entire site is going to be included within the review process, we would catch those things. And obviously, if it's a full site plan, we would catch all those things. Donna, do you have any other?
I did want to point out that you, Brent, said if the non-conforming structure was outside of the limits of construction, but not unpermitted, which is two separate things. So if it was unpermitted, we would pick that up in the limited site plan review because if it was unpermitted, it might not be non-conforming. It would just be illegal.
Right, it'd just simply be illegal. Okay, that's great. I think that's something we also should keep our eye on to ensure that some things don't get past us in the limited site plan review. Thanks.
Thank you. I understand, I wanted to get a little bit greater quality clarity on the concept that you're talking about with it having little impact, having the additional impervious cover. So I understand the argument in the context of the 25-year flood or the 50- or 100-year flood, that this little bit of extra impervious cover on the whole in a big area is not going to appreciably impact the flooding. What we're seeing, though, in the localized flood areas, as I understand it, are areas that are flooding with, you know, one-to-two-year, two-inch rain events. And they're just pretty regularly doing that. And we would still be putting additional development in areas that we know already are flooding. And I don't think it's just the three lots, from what I understood, from the areas that have been removed, where we have that. And so I'm not understanding how, if I add a whole bunch of impervious cover around near areas that are already experiencing flooding on the one-to-two-year, one-to-two-inch level, then we add all of this impervious cover nearby, how we are, A, not exacerbating the amount of flooding that's happening with these very low rain events and in situations where we've already decided there's no infrastructure fix? And then we're going to add more people into that situation with no proviso that they have to do anything to make sure that those structures are not flooding? So can you help me understand those scenarios?
So, great question. So we did look at, so in the Del Certo example, we looked at a range of storm sizes, including the two-year flood, which is, you know, kind of the smallest flood we look at generally. And obviously, that's a 50% chance of occurring in any given year. So that happens a lot. And if somebody's subject to that, that's an alarming situation. And so what we're seeing is, again, we're just, even at those low flood levels, those are the ones with greatest change. That's where the impervious cover matters the most, is in the smaller floods. That's totally correct. But even with that, it's just, in that particular scenario, and again, we're talking, that was a, I think Del Certo was only going up a small amount in impervious cover as are most all of these local flood problem areas. It only, I have to go back and look at the results, but it goes up an inch or an inch and a half or something of that maximum. And that's along the drainage way that that's happening. It's not happening uniformly through the basin. It's happening, the most change is where the water accumulates. And that was why it was a good addition, that council asked us to look at these mapping changes and we came in and removed those 300 properties. That was a very effective, helpful thing. But we're not, even in the smaller floods, we're not, where water is accumulating, of course, it's not going to reduce or hold the line if you have impervious cover increases. But it's just, again, we're talking about, you know, very small, very small increments.
So we're talking about very small increments of entitled impervious cover. That's not necessarily what would be the change on the ground. So you only modeled what they're entitled versus what they would be newly entitled. You didn't model what was on the ground now versus what they could go to, which is, I think, what people are concerned about.
So in the Del Certo example, we took, we held the line on the commercial multifamily projects because those are in the new zone, those are not increasing, and then, and actually are providing greenfield flood management. And so that's actually, you know, helping, you know, push it down where applicable. Not all the sites have that on there. The, but meanwhile, the, what we did is we maxed out the single-family residential areas and just assumed they go to their maximum. So we did look at the, we looked at entitlements, not just, we looked at existing conditions and we also looked at the maxed-out condition as well.
Were those ones mapped, I'm sorry, I don't remember the Del Certo example. Were those maxed out into the missing middle to RM1 in those examples? Or were they just R2B?
I think we were looking at the, we were looking at the single-family. But again,
Okay, because the areas that we're concerned about, it's going to RM1 from single-family that's not billed out to the impervious cover and they're already experiencing flooding at, you know, one-inch rainfalls?
I think the key is the delta. And so we were looking at something, I think it was at 31% impervious, and we looked at it all the way up to 47, which is actually a little bit higher than today's 45. So looking at that kind of delta of change within the single-family area, it was driving a very small change with the drainage system.
I will take this to the extent that we have any time before we're voting. I will try and talk with you about this. I appreciate the additional guardrails that were introduced in this draft for some of the lot-to-lot flooding, and I welcome those. I wanted to understand, you made a comment that we're now enforcing the plumbing code, et cetera. Can you speak a little bit more about how that enforcement happens and who the responsibility lies on and what the city is planning to do to increase its ability to enforce? Because the last, we had the conversation when this was first introduced back in October, we had said there were two cases of enforcement of where this had happened. And I am concerned that, you know, you have to know that you can enforce this. You have to be able to have the lawyer who will help you through this process. You know, I have cases now in my district where they could have used that, who had lawyers, who didn't know this was possible. And I understand you're doing education, but I am still fairly skeptical that we have a robust experience with the enforcement on this. I think there's some equity concerns about who will be able to say, like, you're flooding my property and you have to do something about it.
So those are great questions. And so this is a relatively new provision. It's not widely known. And so part of this effort, and I appreciate councilman, your, council member, you're looking at getting the word out, so that's really important. We have talked with our DSD staff colleagues and our code department colleagues about how we can improve our, and coordinate our response to this. But it is, it is, but I would say that it's not, it is no longer the case, as it was before this plumbing code amendment, that you have to have a lawyer to actually interact with this. Because, and that's one of the advantages of this, is previously it was state law. You can't flood your neighbor. So then probably folks were having to hire an attorney and go through the, you know, the court process to try to get a remedy or mediate it somehow. Now the city is going to have a role in this with, already, the city now has a role with this in problems that were created by construction post-2017 when that rule went into effect, that ordinance went into effect. And so now, if somebody is affected and wants to remedy that, they can approach the city. And we would either, if a project, the allegedly offending project is under construction, we would talk to our DSD. The DSD staff would become involved. And if it's post-construction, post-certified occupancy, then our code department would be, would become involved.
And I would just point out briefly as well that, again, as similar to our response to Councilmember Harper-Madison's question about impervious cover, the, one of the most effective means of enforcement is the development review process. And I think the two instances where this provision has been enforced were both instances where there was an administrative hold put on inspections until the landowner made some modifications that would address what were obvious problems that would potentially cause flooding to adjacent property. So I think the city, this is new territory and it's not going to happen overnight, but the city staff have shown a commitment to trying to make this provision work. Additionally, in terms of potential local amendments, we've been discussing with watershed, the possibility of another local amendment to strengthen this provision and to, it's not an intuitive fit for the plumbing code. One doesn't usually think of a plumbing code as being a place where you'd have a drainage requirement like this. So we're thinking about ways of potentially, while maintaining it as a local amendment, which we think is important, also putting it or referencing it in other parts of the code so it's more clear to people, people who are looking at the parts of the code you would go to to look at drainage requirements, they will see that prominently stated.
I think that would be a really good idea to reinforce that. So there have been no cases post-construction?
I'm not aware of any.
Where it's been enforced?
Yes, I'm not aware of any. But it would potentially apply post-construction.
Mr. Gonzalez, can you make sure that through this process, if we are going to rely on this provision, that our code department and DSD have the resources they need to be able to enforce this? Because I think we're going to see a lot of folks raising issues related to this.
We will, yes.
Okay. A couple more before we go on to the other sections. Kathy and then Greg.
Thanks. A couple of things. I'm just looking back at one of the emails I got from a property that is now being absorbed into the Atlas 14 floodplain maps. They went to one of the open houses and indicate or report that the staffer who looked at it indicated that indeed the RM1 designation just west of the property would likely have a negative impact on them due to lot-to-lot drainage issues and stormwater runoff. And so they are concerned, as are others who have voiced concerns about flood insurance, how they might be impacted from a practical standpoint as well as a financial one. I wanted to go back, though, to a couple of things, and I'll provide you with those addresses. But just to be clear, there are, you know, as we're hearing about particular instances, I think I've got three in my inbox just today, of individual property owners who have varying levels. They don't understand the inconsistent, I mean, I'm getting these very frequently. And these are just the folks who are aware of what's going on and responding. So there is just no telling how many other similarly situated properties might be, might be, also need that kind of individualized attention and, you know, may not even be aware of the proposed rezoning at this stage. But I want to just go back to the original amendment, which was to consider a small increase in impervious cover in R4 with reduced impervious cover in R2 zones to mitigate in the same watershed the increase in impervious cover. But as I understand what you're saying, houses that are already constructed would be allowed to go up to 45%. So there's no reduction from the 40% that's in the new code, nor is there a reduction from the previous code. So we can't achieve that in areas that are built out. We can't achieve the meaning of this or the intent of this amendment, as I understand it. Because you're allowing the R4s to increase in impervious cover. Within the same watershed, most of those tracts are already built out, so they'll have entitlements to 45%. So if there was an intent, as I understood it, to try to mitigate the concerns that some of us expressed about allowing that increase to 60%, we've, we cannot, there is not a way to achieve that unless you have a lot of vacant lots in your area. And the reality is, in the areas that are being upzoned to R4 and RM1, there are not a lot of vacant lots. Those are fully built-out lots. They'll be entitled to 45%. And so I had a question about whether you've modeled, what you've modeled, and I know you spoke to us about this in the past, and so I may just need to go back to some of those work sessions. But I'm interested in seeing modeling, in the past, if you've done it, of areas, I think I remember that Del Certo was not mapped largely for RM1 and R4. And so what I would like to see is modeling of those areas where you have lots within localized area flooding. And I showed the map of my area before. There are multiple areas that overlap with areas that are areas that overlap with areas that are also now in the transition zone, which have documented localized area flooding. I'd like to see the modeling of an area like that, where the impervious cover is changing from 45% to 60%, and, and see what, what impact that has. So, again, if you've done some of those areas, and Mr. Holland, maybe you could just weigh in, did you do some of the areas that were changing from 45, 45% to RM1 or R4? Have you modeled one of those areas within a localized flooding area?
So, we haven't, we haven't modeled, we just modeled the one area.
Del Certo.
It's a, it's a pretty involved process, we, you know, got a consultant on board, and it took a number of months, actually, to create the, it's not a, it's not a just, you know, week-long or, you know, trivial exercise, unfortunately. I wish we could do this more quickly, but it is rather labor-intensive. So, the key, though, is not, does it have RM1 or not, or R4, or what have you, it's like, what is the delta, what's the increase in impervious cover that's, that's going to be modeled from existing to, to propose, or comparing with existing, existing entitlements to proposed entitlements? And so, I would argue that in the case of Del Certo, we have a meaningful outcome, even though it didn't have, you know, I have to go back and check what the missing middle situation is with Del Certo, but let's, let's just say it had almost none, or none, then, you're still looking at, what's the change? And so, the change, the change is driving it one way or the other, and so, we actually did look at, and we were seeing that it was varied, there were, the changes we were looking at were existing to maximum, not just the different, you know, these, these other differences, and we're not seeing a big, big delta. So, it's possible that we, we could find, that modeling a new area that has, you know, has more missing middle would, would have a slightly different outcome, but I'm not, I'm not, I would not expect that, because we're not, again, when you look at the areas in aggregate, with existing roads, with properties that don't, aren't being upzoned to higher impervious cover levels, we're not seeing 33% impervious cover increases, we're seeing something much, much, much less.
I think that we need to sit and maybe look at some of the areas I'm talking about, because when you have 50% of a neighborhood being remapped...
Sure.
You're, you're, you're not talking about a small increase in impervious cover. Most of those, as I mentioned a minute ago, are not billed out to their full 45% now, and so, the delta is actually quite large.
Okay.
Between what is currently on the ground and what is entitled. Can you help me understand why, given, given the thrust of the amendment to reduce, you know, to increase the impervious cover, if there was a reduction, knowing you can't achieve that reduction on built-out properties, why the staff proceeded along with the increase?
So, that's a great question, and so, so, it's a policy call by council, if you want to hold the 40% to all properties, whether they're existing or not, that is, that's a choice, of course. So, we looked at it and said, let's, let's, let's apply it to new builds, which is going to also complement the preservation incentives that you guys have been looking at as well. And so, I would argue that even if you had every single house built out in a certain area that's already at 45, there are going to be folks, but some of those projects, or some of those properties, it doesn't have to be vacant for somebody to decide to tear that down and build a new one. And so, over time, over the, over the long haul, you're going to have people make choices to tear down an existing home and put something back. And so, in every one of those cases, if you did that, you would have to go to 40% and not go to 45. So, incrementally, you're going to see a little bit of reduction in those areas, and incrementally, you're going to see a little bit of reduction, increase in the, in the missing middle areas. We're, we're working on modeling that, it's kind of, you know, we're having to use assumptions and so forth, so hopefully, by next week, and certainly within the next couple of weeks, we're going to come out with our new impervious cover analysis by watershed. But, but I would, I would, I would say that, that our proposal does incrementally decrease some of those single-family, and there's about a 10-to-1 ratio between missing middle, I mean, of single-family, the two-family versus the, the missing middle. So, there's a lot more properties that are R2 than there are R4, RM1, and so, of course...
Citywide, or by watershed, or...
Yeah, I think, I think those are citywide numbers, I'm thinking offhand, but...
I think it'd be super valuable if we had, you know, kind of a, a big giant map, looking at all the proposed mapping, because you'll see, pretty much, all the change is taking place in one area of the city, and that's the central city. I mean, there are extremely minimal changes anywhere else. So, as we talk about citywide, you can understand why people who live in those neighborhoods are, are saying, you know, it's great to talk about impervious cover increases being minimal citywide, it's great to talk about these changes citywide, except that, I don't know, what percentage, the largest percentage of the districts that, that are represented on this council are not being impacted. You're talking about the impacts largely on, on four council districts, one, mine, most. So, I, I think it would be very valuable, especially if you want to try to assure people that the significant increase in impervious cover is not going to impact their areas. I, I think we really need to be able to model that.
I think that's a good point.
And I would say that, as I see it, the staff have made different recommendations. There are two choices when faced with a recommendation that passed on page 26, discussed in the staff response. Knowing that we couldn't achieve that lower reduction in R2, we could have said, hey, since we can't achieve that in most of the areas that are being rezoned to R4, we can't increase the impervious cover in R4 without having a measurable impact. I mean, there were two choices, right, about, we, we have the policy choice about whether to hold everybody to 40%, even if they have 45% now, but the other choice would have been to not go as far in, in the amendment that Councilmember Casar brought to increase the impervious cover in those transition zones. So, that's another policy question I think we can consider.
Okay, we have a half an hour left, and we have several more pages.
Okay, one last quick question, I just want to clarify, did you say earlier, 1 to 2 inches, or 1 to 2%?
In regard to the...
The increase in...
For the Del Certo example, for instance?
No, you were talking about the estimates of, of increases in flooding.
Yeah, I think, so I was just referring back to our Del Certo study, which just showed this, you know, one-inch kind of delta between the, between, between the scenarios, even, even in the two-year flood. Can I have to go back and look at that?
Okay, I wasn't sure if you had said 1 to 2 inches or 1 to 2%.
And again, that's along the drainageway itself, it's not, you know, if you looked, if you looked up slope of that, you're just, you're not going to see the same response, that's where the most water is going, the most change is happening, and that's where we're modeling it. But that's, that'd be the, that, those were the maximum. We looked, we looked at both the average increase and the, and the maximum.
But it was 1 to 2 inches.
That's my...
So, I guess, one of the things that, that I just wanted to raise is that it's my understanding we're changing Atlas 14, I mean, Atlas 14 is responding to the fact that the average rainfall is changing from 10.2 inches to 13.
Correct.
So, we're acknowledging that a 2.8 increase in rainfall is significant, and so, I think that's the other thing that I see people grappling with. You know, why is 1 to 2 change in inches increase in this instance being described as diminimant, or diminimus, I think, was the word you may have used in the past, yet we're changing all of our floodplains to address the 2.8 increase that is, that is, we're experiencing? You know, that's significant enough that it's changing floodplains around the city, floodplain maps.
Sure, and as you get these, I mean, if the, as the, as the, the rainfall intensity is, ratchets up, it, it further diminishes the role of impervious cover with that, because it becomes, the more, the smaller the storm, the more, the more impervious cover weighs in and has a big impact. And so, we, we layer, and then the new, the new 500-year event is like 19 inches or something, that's basically have almost no impact from the previous cover, so I don't think, I think we're...
I was really talking about the scale of the increase, whether or not the scale of the increase is significant or not. And so, the 2.8 seems to be significant in the one context, 1 to 2 seems not significant in this. So, I mean, I guess if we had a project that came before us and said they were, you know, it was likely going to, and Kevin, you know, stood up and said it was likely to increase the runoff by 1 to 2 inches, would we regard that as significant? Probably.
And, and if you do look at the maps, the, a lot of it has to do with the topo, you know, the topography and the, and so forth, but in many, many areas of town, including actually in the central city, there's not as great of increase in the Atlas 14 floodplain as there was, I mean, if you compare yesterday's 100 with yesterday's 500, there's this kind of thin ribbon along the edge that's the new 500. It affects people, it's real, I'm not, I'm not trying to diminish that, but it's, it's not an actually, in, in many cases, or in most cases, it's not, there's not a very large difference between the 100 and the 500. We have flatter terrain in the east, that's where you're seeing the, you're seeing the bigger changes. But anyway, we can, we can, we'd be happy to take this offline, too.
Greg, do you want to speak?
Yes, please. Because when, when we've had, well, actually, let me start off by saying thanks to you all, because I think we're going to be moving on to another presentation. You've got lots and lots of questions from my office, and I think from every council office and from the public. You're changing so many components of this to try to get our water quality and flooding issues better, so first of all, thank you guys. From our last presentation, y'all's overall assessment was that we were going to, we were improving our response to flooding and improving our water quality, because we're, in particular, because the biggest changes throughout this entire zoning code are on the big commercial tracts, in those centers and on those corridors that abut the transition areas. And so, is it still the case that it's y'all's read, that watershed by watershed and citywide, we're coming out of this better on flooding and better on water quality than we are today?
Yes, that is correct, because we, the, the biggest areas of changes are in those commercial areas, retrofitting and the, the greenfield flood management proposal and so forth, those, those have major, major impacts, more than the, the small incremental impacts within the, these other zones.
And so, in that Del Certo example, where you're talking about maybe half an inch, maybe one inch in a floodway in a smaller rain event, that is not the same kind of thing as one inch more of rainfall across the, the city, that's not an apples-to-apples...
That's correct. That is very, very true.
And so, in the end, what y'all are talking about is reducing flooding and improving water quality by redeveloping these big parking lots into something that acts more like they did when they were greenfields, is that right?
That's right.
And then, in the transition areas that sometimes abut, or oftentimes, in almost every ca, almost every case are abutting, a corridor or a center that has those commercial tracts, you're saying there would be a incremental increase in impervious cover, potentially on those missing middle tracts, but then, all of the R2 tracts that are next to it, when those redevelop, you're talking about a decrease there.
Correct, for those that choose to redevelop entirely. And, and by the way, the one-inch increase we had with that Del Certo example, we were just looking at residential infill, we weren't looking at residential infill plus the benefits of those new flood mitigation strategies. So, that actually would have, that's why we were confident, the, the area of change that's going to have that greenfield's change is very large, and is going to have a very meaningful impact, so that's...
So, if you don't calculate the most beneficial things in the code for flooding, and you just calculate the worst-case scenario on, in that, in that missing middle zone, then you see an increase in the small storm events that is very small, but in those small storm events, that's not the big floods that we're talking about, that's, that's the smaller rainfalls.
That's correct.
So, if you break down the zoning changes across three categories, and you look at an area where we've changed, you look at the commercial tract, then you might look at missing middle tracts, and then you look at the R2 tracts, almost, that happens almost every time, that there's all three of those next to each other.
No, it doesn't. That's not accurate.
I, I didn't say every time, I just said almost every time, that is a general, that's a general rule, as a general rule, we've got commercial tracts, missing middle tracts, and, and R2 tracts, in some cases, it's just missing middle tracts and then R2 tracts. But in the cases where you've got all three of those next to each other, you've got the decrease in flood impact and increase in water quality on the commercial ones, that's the biggest impact. Then you have the missing middle ones, where you have similar impervious cover limits, or if they increase over a certain level, they've got to drain to the street. And then, you've got the R2, where you have a decrease when they redevelop, just like you, just like in the R4, you can, those are tracts when they redevelop, might look different, as we know in lots of our neighborhoods, houses get torn down, those redevelop, and you've decreased it there.
That's correct.
So, I just want to make sure that we have that, each of those in, in, sort of in its own place, and I think that we can still debate them and still amend them, but I just think that we have all three of those happening, and it's important for folks to hear that, that broader set of change that you guys have worked on, and, and we're probably not done, I mean, I'm sure everybody's going to have their opinion, but I, but I don't want folks to take away from this presentation that, that one inch that you saw maybe in the Del Certo example in a small rainfall is the equivalent of one inch citywide, because I don't think that we would support that. And I don't think that you would say that that's an improvement to flooding and water quality citywide, and in each watershed, if that's where, if that were the case, and so, I just wanted to make that, that really clear.
Okay, we're not going to solve this question here today, we're going to go on to the rest of the presentation.
I haven't had a chance to speak on this, Mayor, and I'll just take a second. I, I know you want to move on.
We're going to finish the rest of this presentation, because we're going to stop at 11, we're going to have more chance for people to talk, we can come back. I understand the light wasn't on, we're now further, I wish you had turned on the light earlier, you'll get a chance to speak on it later, we're going to finish the presentation.
How about 10 seconds? They're talking about Del Certo, my area, so just specifically, I'll just say very, very quickly, I appreciate what you're saying, Councilmember Casar, we have to remember what happens in one particular area is just as important as what happens citywide. One inch in one area may be really important to those people who are living there, and that is why I think part of the conversation needs to be, you cannot generalize, we need to talk about planning on particular areas, because the areas, what you described is not happening everywhere. And so, in order to understand the impact of what we're doing as, as code amendments, we need to drill down and allow for opportunities to plan specific areas. And I'd be happy to talk with you more about it afterwards.
Okay. At some point in this, you're going to have to return to this topic, because you have said that both localized and globally, we're in a better place than we were before, and the code has made provisions to, to take care of what we're hearing from the concerns coming from people. We have people that are saying, but we have these concerns, and somehow or another, we need to true those up, and we need to be as definitive about what we know and what we don't know, so that we can, in fact, true up this conversation. We're not going to do that right now, we need to figure out what is the best forum to be able to do that, maybe that's a memo, maybe it's you going to these offices to talk about their individualized areas, to see if you can assuage the concerns the way that you said that you could. But regardless, we have 20 minutes, we're going to finish the rest of this morning's packet, we're also going to come back at 1 to 5. If we finish before 11, we'll take the time and give it to a couple people. Please continue the presentation.
So, thank you, Mayor, how come we're going to move into some other non-zoning topics? And joining us this morning is Scott Grantham from the Parks and Recreation Department and a member of the core team for the Land Development Code Revision. And just briefly, to kind of give an overview of the amendments that council directed us to address on first reading, the first one pertains to corridors and centers, and without, without reading all of the text on screen, the essence of this one is to really codify PARD's existing practices with respect to the types of sites that they want to consider for dedication, and this will help, as I'll address in a minute, this will help, you know, further the goals of efficiency and streamlining the review process. Additionally, we've included a provision that addresses Councilmember Harper-Madison's amendment with respect to pocket parks. And we've included a, I think, a fairly technical amendment, not of general interest, related to how we go about documenting private parkland obligations. And then, finally, we have an amendment here that we still are continuing to fine-tune and look at, and that has to do with the degree to which parkland dedication requirements apply to missing middle housing types. And I think we're, it will not take us long to land the plane on that, and what we propose will be simple, straightforward, but we have just a few more issues, I think, to work through, and we will do that in, in advance of third reading. So, with that, briefly, we'll just give an overview of the key amendments, and the, the first one is the, the amendment related to corridor and center sites, and what this would do is essentially, is if it's a property that is on a designated corridor, and it's less than or equal to 1.66 acres, and it's not adjacent to a creek, body of water, or an existing or planned park or trail, then the applicant would have the ability to provide a fee, to pay a fee in lieu rather than, rather than dedicate parkland, and that would, of course, be up to the applicant, a fee in lieu is always, has the obligation of simply complying with the underlying requirement. But by codifying these provisions, it would ensure that, you know, PARD does not want parks of less than a quarter acre, so this would, this cutoff point would ensure that sites that meet these requirements, these criteria, would not need to be provided to them for, for review. Additionally, we've built in, with PARD's, PARD's guidance and leadership, we've included criteria that ensure that... that ensure that if it is a property that's going to, where dedication would provide meaningful connectivity or otherwise sort of enhance the city's park system, that those can be considered for dedication. So this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. This is a context-sensitive incremental process improvement that we hope would help to make the review process more efficient. Additionally, we have, in response to Councilmember Harper-Madison's amendment, we have provided a limited site plan review process for pocket parks, and we do not call them pocket parks. We call them something else.
Good morning, councilmembers. Mayor, Scott Grantham with Parks and Recreation. Just wanted to briefly clarify on that, and thank you, Councilmember Harper-Madison, for recognizing this as an issue that, with regard to pocket parks, we've looked at this and seen that the constraint oftentimes is not necessarily on the size of the park, but the type of programming that's put in. So really, for the amendment, we are looking at, the size is not a constraint. It's the types of amendments, or the types of improvements that would be able to fall under the limited site plan, into the limited site plan bucket, so that they wouldn't need to go through a whole site plan.
And it, and those, the factors, the term of art we've developed is standard publicly-accessible recreation amenity. I'll get the hang of that eventually, but the... Standard publicly-accessible recreation amenity. And the features that are sort of go into defining it are, as Scott mentioned, they're ones that ensure that it's not the type of site that is going to trigger environmental regulations, or regulations that wouldn't be appropriate for a limited review process. And specifically, it can't be a situation where it requires the removal of a protected or regulated tree. It's not within the 100-year floodplain unless the watershed director determines that it would have an insignificant effect on the waterway. Does not require environmental variances, and does not include more than 10 parking spots. And so, I think these criteria would encompass your traditional pocket park in most instances and other situations as well. But if it's a site that really does impact other regulations, it wouldn't be eligible for the streamlined process. Additionally, as I mentioned, we're continuing to look at an appropriate application of parkland dedication requirements for missing middle zones, and that review remains ongoing, and I anticipate that we'll have those issues and a proposal worked out soon. And before we move on to trees and our other process, non-zoning-related amendments, are there any questions with respect to parkland?
Why don't you continue with the presentation?
Sorry?
Finish with your presentation on these non-zoning matters.
So we'll move on, then, to the tree-related amendments, and we have several. And again, I think, like the parkland dedication-related amendments, these are modest incremental changes that are intended to really help the review process with respect to corridor lots while maintaining the substantive heart of our tree regulations. And the city arborist could not be here this morning, and so, I think Donna and I will be able to address most of the questions. But if there are technical questions that we're not able to answer, we will follow up with you as soon as we can. So the first aspect of this amendment is to codify a no-net-loss policy and a 50-50 tree canopy policy. And sort of, we have included, in response to that, enabling language in the ordinance that really sets the stage for implementation of that policy. And I think that will require, you know, careful changes to the environmental criteria manual and other, you know, administrative work to really enforce and flesh that out. But it's something that we've, through the code amendments that are before you signaled a commitment to, and that the city arborist is definitely very excited about working on in the near future. Additionally, the code has been revised per council direction to further limit the ability to get administrative variances for heritage tree removal. Under the first reading draft, the proposal was for that administrative process to be available for sites that are located on corridors, and the revisions would limit that to sites that are located on the transit priority network. So that's a more limited approach to allowing administrative variances for heritage trees on corridors. Additionally, we want to speak to Councilmember Ellis's amendment. Councilmember Ellis's amendment, and this will, I think, bleed into another aspect of our presentation this morning, but Councilmember Ellis's amendment was essentially, without reading it verbatim, was to really consider a way to provide some kind of a development bonus with respect to sites that are preserving heritage trees. And we really, we considered several factors in terms of how to address this amendment, and it's one of the amendments that council proposed or directed us to do that we really had to kind of approach slightly differently. And so, I just want to explain as clearly as I can our thinking and our approach to it. A bonus, by definition, is inherently something that, where you're getting some sort of an extra entitlement for doing something that you're not otherwise required to do. And because the Heritage Tree Preservation Ordinance is a requirement, it's not an option, it's mandatory, it really wasn't appropriate to characterize that as a bonus. So we then sort of shifted our thinking and looked at, well, what if we just baked into the site development standards some enhanced, automatic enhanced entitlements for sites that contain heritage trees? And that proved to be very difficult to apply kind of at a uniform code level. The sites are different, and so, writing a regulation that would sort of encompass those distinctions within sort of the body of a uniformly-applied site development standard was very challenging. And additionally, as this amendment, as your amendment, Councilmember Ellis acknowledges, we want to be sure that we don't work at cross purposes with the Affordable Density Bonus Program. And so, I think there's definitely concerns that by providing other increased enhancements, we can potentially create a disincentive for using that program. So what we've done is, what we've done, I'll address this in a second, but we're gonna talk in a minute about the Board of Adjustment Special Exception Process that I think provides some of what you're looking for in this amendment. So additionally, with respect to, there's one point I didn't mention. As I mentioned, we're limiting, we're proposing to limit the administrative variance for heritage trees to sites that are on the TPN. And additionally, we've codified what was previously in our staff report, that at least 50% of the project has to be residential, and it has to consist of at least 10% onsite affordable units. And another key point of our tree-related amendments that I want to mention is that we have codified a requirement that trees, that all residential projects have a tree planting requirement. And this will be something that is key, a cornerstone of our efforts to further the no-net-loss of tree canopy goal that is part of Councilmember Poole's amendment. And I think this is, this is a provision that will require, as I mentioned, further changes to the environmental criteria manual. And it's our hope that before third reading, we can provide a little bit more specificity as to kind of what those changes would look like, with recognizing that there will be ECM amendments necessary as well. So with those changes, I just want to go ahead and go into our other process amendments, and this is, I think, our last slide. The Board of Adjustment Special Exception Process. So sort of harkening back to Councilmember Ellis's amendment, what this would do is it would authorize the Board of Adjustment, if there are non-zoning regulations that are deemed to pose a significant impediment to housing construction that really cost, you know, cost to project units, it would allow the Board of Adjustment to consider 10% reductions in height and setback restrictions. And this is something where the Board of Adjustment, you know, is a sovereign board, and they have authority to consider a variety of factors, and we've built into the regulations criteria that allow them to consider, you know, the context of the neighborhood, the context of the area, and whether it would have, whether the reduction would have a significant impact on adjoining properties. But special exceptions are a tool that are established under state law where municipalities can really craft criteria by which the board, their local boards of adjustment may consider granting some kind of a relief from zoning regulations in cases where it's not just a traditional hardship variance, where it's not a steep slope or a property that is simply, the regulations render it unbuildable or deprive a landowner of reasonable use. Special exceptions are a tool that cities can use to sort of create other circumstances where the city deems it appropriate to give a little bit of relaxed standards with respect to zoning. And so, Councilmember Ellis, in cases where there is a heritage tree and the requirement to preserve it does impact housing construction, this would authorize but not require the Board of Adjustment to consider that in granting some relief. And additionally, and this is an important point, this would not apply in the house-scale residential zones. It would only apply in the RM and above. So it's really intended for sort of larger-scale, multi-unit structures. And additionally, we've proposed some minor changes in response to other council amendments. We've proposed some clarification to the minor use permit process and the conditional use permit criteria. And those are really intended to sort of clarify the criteria and the range of conditions that are available under the minor use permit process versus the CUP. And also, to recognize that the criteria that are applied, the way that CUPs and MUPs are reviewed should be cognizant of the type of construction that is proposed. And so, if a CUP or MUP is a project that is site plan exempt, or what we now call limited site plan, the scope of conditions and scope of review would be different than if it were a larger-scale project. And that's something that review staff felt was important in the interest of clarifying and streamlining our process, just to be clear on. And additionally, we have included in the code an allowance for projects that are up to three units to take advantage of the automatic streamlined regulations. And that would be limited to projects that are outside of the Barton Springs Zone. If you're in the Barton Springs Zone, the streamlined regulation entitlement would only apply up to two units. So that concludes our process-related amendments, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, colleagues. We have five minutes. We're gonna do a speed round. Everybody has 30 seconds to daylight and issue. We can return to them this afternoon at the end of the day, assuming we get through the mapping and that. Why don't you go ahead? Paige, you have 30 seconds.
I appreciate your work in looking at that non-bonus. I agree with your language, and it was kind of brought to my attention as well, that, you know, you're not trying to conflict with the affordable housing bonuses, and you're not trying to give someone something they wouldn't otherwise be able to do. And it really was geared toward, you know, if you are preserving that heritage tree, how can you also balance the need for housing units and square footage, and trying to kind of get a little more creative with the shape of a structure as opposed to, you know, other forms of non-zoning regulations that we have. So I'll simmer on the 10% and kind of see how that plays out and work with you offline, but it sounds like a happy medium between people that should be protecting the tree canopy and not having that sacrifice our housing units available. So I really appreciate your work in trying to toy with that and find a good space to make that happen.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate the continued work that you're doing on the parkland dedication issue. We're obviously trying to make sure that we can maximize density. We learned yesterday that most of the new residential density is happening on our corridors, the additional supply, capacity that we have, and everybody in all departments are working to make sure that happens. My understanding is that the conversation is now centering over just really codifying what is the historical practice in lots between 1.6 and five or six acres. I had an amendment on that that I pulled down because you were making headway in those conversations. Please keep us abreast of those, because I want to see that worked out that way rather than having to urge an amendment. So thank you. Leslie?
Thanks. As we talked about, Brent, my staff and I are working on an IFC on the no-net loss for the tree canopy and on that amendment, so we'll get the numbers needed and work with you further to get a metric for that canopy replacement policy. But that's gonna be a really important one for our city. Thanks.
Anybody else make a comment?
Yes, thank you. I'll go back to the original and just make sure I'm correct, but I believe the special exception of the 10% variance was an item that was in the first draft of Code Next, and if I'm remembering correctly, I think the League of Women Voters and others expressed concerns about it. Has it altered much since that first iteration?
So, Councilmember Tovo, these are actually two separate things. I believe what you're referring to is something that is administrative modification that the...
That's correct.
Yeah, the Development Services is authorized to grant in situations, and I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it's limited to situations where there is a, there's unforeseen circumstances related to site features that then, in inspection, it's determined that a structure is slightly off. So it would allow inspectors to grant some relief in the field where a structure is not built entirely according to plans.
Is that still in the code? Is that in this version of the code?
I believe, I believe it is. We were not, it was not directed to be modified, so it is in this version of the code.
You mean it wasn't directed on first reading to be modified?
It was never, it was carried forward from draft three, and we were never directed to remove it. What we were directed to remove and did remove was, and really volunteered in one of our staff reports, based on our discussions with Chair Don Leighton Burwell in the Board of Adjustment, is there was a special exception that was built in that would have allowed the Board of Adjustment to consider granting relief in situations where there was a permit issued in air, and it might not, might not be a case where it's a hardship or it meets the criteria for a variance, but it was a permit that was issued in air in good faith, and it would have allowed the Board of Adjustments, and we removed that from this draft.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm glad we ended up talking about the administrative waiver. I had, it had escaped my attention that that was in this draft of code, of the Land Development Code. And so, I know there were concerns, as I mentioned, from the League of Women Voters and others about that 10% administrative variance, and so, the fact that it remains in the code is something that I would like to, that I'll bring an amendment forward on second reading.
Okay. Let's check and see if anybody else has anything that they want to do.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other comments they want to make? You want to finish then real fast?
Sure.
And then, with regard to the 10% reduction in height and setback, is that, do they need to show proof of a hardship in the same, with the same criteria that currently exist? Or could, or is it, is, I mean, from what you've said and what it looks like here, if you can say that you can get more housing if you have 10% more, is that now a hardship?
So the intent, it's not a hardship variance. It's really, it's intended to be something where non-zoning regulations that could be utility easements, drainage ponds, water quality ponds, protected trees, have a significant impact on the construction of housing. And again, this would be outside of the house-scale residential zones. Then it would authorize the Board of Adjustment, with due consideration to area character and the surrounding properties, to, in those circumstances, if it's gonna help housing construction and help the, you know, providing units, it would allow the Board of Adjustment to relax those standards, and it would be solely a decision within their discretion. But it's definitely something that is intended to be different than just a standard variance. And council's direction, you know, throughout this process has signaled and has emphasized sort of the need to prioritize regulations and expressed concern in various forms about the cumulative impact that regulations can have. And there's no easy answer to that, and it's not something, one of the ideas that was floated was something along the lines of alternative equivalent compliance that would be within staff's authority, and we're not comfortable with that and would not recommend that. If there's going to be a body that has the power to sort of consider the holistic impacts of regulations on other policy goals, that really should be the Board of Adjustment. And so, that's why we've offered this special exception for you all to consider.
Would you mind telling me, since we, since the draft isn't marked with changes, would you mind telling us what the exact provision is that we would look to in the code? And you can tell me afterward, or at the afternoon session, if you could, if you could please provide me with the code citation.
Yes, I believe it is cited in our staff report, but I have it right here. It is Section 233B4040. It is section 23, 3B, 40, 40, 40.
Mayor.
23, 3D, 40, 40.
3B.
3B, thank you.
Jimmy?
So that, this was my amendment during first reading, and it really was what Brent laid out, which is if you have an ability to build a triplex but for two feet to the left, and because of the overlay of all the other requirements, you can't get that triplex like we want to see get built, then you let, in this case, what staff is saying is you let BOA account for that. And we've seen examples of that when there's certain types of slopes, and where do you measure the height from? And, you know, let's save the tree by moving the building two feet to the left, and we can actually get more of the things we want. We want to preserve more trees, we want more water quality, we want more housing. And so the intent is to say, you know, height and setbacks are less important than preserving a tree. And if we can find ways within a small tolerance to get there, then we should, in this case, let BOA make that determination.
All right, it is two minutes after 11:00. We're going to reset this meeting and reconvene at 1:00. All right, we have a quorum. No microphones yet. We have a quorum. We're going to go ahead and get started. I was just at an event with Councilmember Alter. She's working her way back. I left early. The mayor pro tem is with her family down in San Antonio today. There's a medical issue in her family. We'll go ahead and get started. We're going to break this into three chunks for questioning. We're going to do the preservation incentive and calculating the FAR first, then open it up for questions. Then we'll do the house-scale residential testing and FAR calibration questions, and then multi-unit and mixed-unit questions. I'm going to assume we're going to spend three hours with these, so hopefully we'll try to keep it to our block so that we have time at the end for people to ask any questions that they want to ask. And I'll try and announce timing so that we can share time equally. The floor is yours. Today is a continuation of this morning's meeting here on February 5th in the Boards and Commissions Room. Please go ahead.
Mayor and Council, Greg Dutton, planning and zoning. So this afternoon, excuse me, we've got a presentation, you'll have to pardon my voice, suffering from allergies. We've got a presentation, as the mayor mentioned, that will cover the following topics: the preservation incentive and calculating FAR, and then house-scale residential testing and FAR calibration, which will include data analysis and modeling, and then lastly, multi-unit, mixed-use modeling and compatibility. We're just going to get right to it. Preservation incentive. So the preservation incentive is a tool that has been in previous drafts, and over time with iteration, it's been really fleshed out and had more specificity added to it. In the first two staff reports, staff indicated that there would be changes to the preservation incentive. And then on first reading, we got some direction from council on the preservation incentive, which is on your screen in front of you now. And I'm not going to read through all of that, but just to paraphrase, it included direction about allowing the preserved unit to be expanded and remodeled, the limitation of a preservation unit to be larger than would otherwise be allowed in the 10-4 draft, allowing the lots, utilizing the preservation incentive to have a simple subdivision process, clarifying that an ADU cannot be used as a preservation incentive as the unit that's being preserved, changing the age for qualification from 30 to 15 years, changing the impervious cover so that it's graduated, and that's what Matt Holland was talking about this morning, so it would fall in line with that. And then waiving parking requirements for the new units, and when utilizing the preservation incentive, making sure that there's an increase in the number of units on the lot. So the preservation incentive tool, as you know, is kind of trying to do a lot of things. It's trying to preserve some character as well as market rate affordable units, but also add units to a lot. So it's doing a number of different things through a single provision. And in the recent draft that came out on the 31st, you'll see the changes that are on the screen in front of you. So the bonus unit now will not count against the maximum FAR. And if you recall, previous drafts, those units that were added to the lot had no cap on FAR, and that led to concerns about large, expensive units being added. So there's now a limit on the maximum FAR for those units that are being added to the lot. One additional unit beyond what's otherwise allowed can be added to the lot. So for instance, in an R2 zone, you can have a maximum of three units. For eligibility, the unit still has to be 30 years old. We know got direction on first reading about changing that to 15 years. We really felt that 30 years was the appropriate timeframe for units that have been built to kind of filter down into something that's more market rate affordable than new housing. If you're doing 15 years or less, then it's less likely that those units would have filtered down to become more organically affordable. The principal use on the site has to be the one that's preserved, so an ADU cannot qualify as the unit that's being preserved. And the number of units, again, has to increase by one, and that's just in there to ensure that we're getting an additional supply out of this tool, more units on the lot than were there previously. The preservation requirements, this is where you're going to see some changes compared to the previous draft. We got a lot of feedback from the public about what those preservation requirements should be. So you'll see that there are limits now on how walls can be removed and altered, and it includes some modification requirements to the roof line and expansion of the original structure. The original structure now can be expanded and added to as if it were any other structure in the zone. So if it's a single-family house in an R2 zone, it can be, the FAR can be increased up to .4. So there are now limitations on the expansion of the preserved structure, there are limitations on the FAR for the new units being added to the lot. Impervious cover follows the same graduated approach that was discussed this morning. So as you add units to the lot, the impervious cover can go up as those units are added. And then parking is waived for new units with the house-scale preservation incentive. And then in multifamily preservation incentive, it's largely the same with some important distinctions. Instead of being able to add one unit more than you would otherwise be allowed in the zone, you can add 50% more units. So that means that in a zone that allows 24 units maximum by right, you could get 36 if you use a preservation incentive. And that's in line with the house-scale preservation incentive, which allows 50% more units in an R2 zone. But it also, it's been calibrated so that the number of units that you can add are fewer than you can get out of the affordable housing bonus program. We just wanted to be mindful that the preservation incentive is another way to get units in FAR, but that it not necessarily outcompete the affordable housing bonus program. So again, eligibility, 30 years, has to be the principal use on the site. And then instead of one unit having to be added to the site, it's 10% because we're talking about a number of units now, not just one or two. The requirements for preserving are slightly different. Instead of having to preserve the unit with limitations on remodel and renovation, 75% of the existing units have to be preserved. And again, that's just because we're talking about sites that have a large number of units instead of just one. But there are still limitations on wall removal, exterior walls, modification to the roof line. And then parking is not exempt for these larger, multi-unit sites, it's just subject to the standard parking exemptions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter Park, who's going to discuss FAR calculations.
Good afternoon. Peter Park, consultant, working with the team. So I'd like to describe some of the changes that are being made, and these form the basis of the calibrations and the models that we'll show you later this afternoon. And it takes from council direction, really focus on better accounting of usable space such as garages and attics in the calculation of FAR, and using the McMansion ordinance as a starting point, but also looking for ways to simplify the manner in which some of these areas are calculated. We carried forward or introduced the counting of floor area that is 15 feet or taller, so it counts twice toward FAR. And provide for, as I said earlier, sort of simpler description of calculating attic and partial garage exemptions. So under the current code, under subchapter F, one can get up to 600 square feet for garage and carport if certain criteria are met. And so the certain criteria is part of what makes it sometimes a little difficult and uncertain. And the same is true with attic, could potentially be fully exempt if meeting certain criteria. And in working with the development staff, the review staff, there's a lot of complexity to this. And so we really worked on trying to find a simpler way to calculate FAR. And so this diagram explains what's proposed. So in the case of a garage, so the orange areas are proposed to be representative of the types of space that would be exempt. Otherwise, it all counts. So on the first floor, you can see part of the garage, up to 200 square feet per unit, is exempt, which is less than today. But as was discussed, the idea here is to, because of one parking space is required, to exempt that, but count garage area if additional parking spaces are provided. In the attic, up to 400 square feet per unit for an attic, for all space that is five feet or taller. So when you go up to the attic space, you can see there's part of the space that's the hatch pattern, might be the crawl space or the attic space in the attic that's not really habitable. So that orange portion is just showing a portion of that third floor. And then something new that was added was allowing up to 60 feet, square feet, per stair. And the idea here, and this is not an unusual way, it's actually a typical way that FAR is calculated in codes, is to recognize that vertical circulation isn't necessary in a multi-story building, and counting it every time is sort of double-counting it, if you will. And in fact, especially as in the smaller lot conditions, in the smaller house conditions, in the models that we developed, they need vertical circulation in order to stay under impervious cover, right? So if you want to gain the square footage, that tends to make a building go up rather than out, right? If we're trying to protect impervious cover. So the idea here is introducing up to 60 square feet per floor exemption for the stair. And so we could have discussion, questions on these first two topics.
Okay. Any discussions or questions on this topic before we go to the next one? Leslie?
Thanks. I was looking at, Greg, I think this is for you, on page four, the 1,600 square feet for an ADU. That is, that amount of square footage is actually larger than many homes, older homes, particularly in the central part of the city. So if I'm remembering right, one version of Code Next had the size of the ADU, some proportion relating to the existing structure that's already on the property. Am I remembering that right?
You are remembering that correctly.
And so why did this change?
So that is still the case on a lot that's not using the preservation incentive. The ADU counts against the FAR. If you are using the preservation incentive, then you can add units to the lot, any mix that you want for units that are allowed in that zone. So you could have multiple ADUs, you could have more than one single-family house. They would just be limited in that case by what the zone requires for those uses, so...
So when I meant proportion, I meant the ratio to the size of the existing structure, and the ADU would be some proportion to that, like half is big, or...
Oh. So that's the case today. In today's code, it scales with the lot size. But the previous drafts of Code Next, or certainly the previous draft on October 4th, no longer had that scaling provision, so it was just a flat...
So what's the theory behind jettisoning that proportionality?
It was really just to make it as simple as possible so that it wouldn't scale with the lot size, it's just a flat cap. And then it would be entirely up to the property owner to build the size of ADU that they wanted to up to a certain point, 1,100 square feet is the max.
Would it really be considered an ADU if it was larger than the original structure that's still on that site?
It depends. You can, you could add an ADU, and it could be larger than the original structure, or you could designate the original structure as the ADU if it was within the floor area size or the square footage size, and then build some other use on the property.
I'm just seeing in my mind's eye some really strange-looking neighborhoods evolving from that sort of thing, so I'm going to ponder that. But 1,600 square feet, my house is 1,614, perfectly serviceable, but to put in, but that's like subdividing my lot and putting another full-size, single-family home right on my lot. So I mean, that's not an ADU, that's subdividing a lot and putting another full-sized home on that lot.
Right. And to clarify, if you add ADUs through the preservation incentive, they still have a size limit to them. It's just that you can also add a single-family house if you want to, because you can add any use allowed in the zone. So at that point, you could, there's really no difference. You're adding an ADU if it's smaller than 1,100, or if it's considered a house.
If that's the case, then I think we shouldn't call it ADUs. We should just say this is part of the two to three units per lot, and this is a full-size home. 1,600 square feet is plenty big for a home. Then I wanted to ask about the placement on the lot. It looks like we're incentivizing flag lots. And there's a reason why in land planning, you stay, you avoid flag lots. And one of those reasons is because there's no other way, how do you get your utilities, assuming it's in the back of a home? Well, you get it through the flag, the long, thin, narrow easement, but that's also generally where people put a pathway or a driveway. And so if the city ever had to come in and dig up the line, they'd have to dig up the driveway. It's also usually a pretty significant distance, and so it's also a lot more expensive to go to the back of a lot, of a flag lot, than it is to attach to the utilities out at the curb line. So I'm concerned about, we are incentivizing flag lots throughout our city when the general perspective of land planners for the last, I don't know how many decades since I guess we, since the Second World War, has been to try to avoid them. Travis County has worked really hard to avoid flag lots. I think there was legislation about flag lots up at the state Capitol, but I can't remember offhand exactly which direction they went. And knowing the state Capitol, maybe they like them. But they give the wrong impression to somebody who may be deciding to build behind a home, that they can lay all, that the expenses that they would incur would be relatively minor, when the fact is the very distance from the dwelling to the hookups is going to be significantly further. And then there's the concern that the city would have as with its utilities, on how do you get the utilities back to that dwelling unit, and what access does the city have? If it's an easement, then the people, then that flag lot doesn't belong to, really, in any meaningful way, to the owner of the property. So I would like to have some assurances that we are not incentivizing flag lots. I don't think we have dug into this area of concern yet, but it's significant, and if we don't talk about it now, it's definitely going to jump out at us.
And the preservation incentive is really not trying to incentivize flag lots or actually subdivision of any kind, it's allowing additional lots on the same, sorry, additional units on the same lot.
I understand about the preservation bonus, and... I understa- I understand about the preservation bonus, and how, how you're not including this in that conversation, but this very likely could happen, and I think it needs to be addressed. And, and Mr. Park, if you think it wouldn't, I'm happy, happy to know that it wouldn't, but I don't know that we can really be sure. And, and so, I want to make sure that we're contemplating flag lots and the, the impacts that they have on our, on our neighborhoods, in the city. Literally, the city.
Lindy Garwood, planning and sending. The incentive for the preservation incentive is really to keep it on the same lot. If you were to subdivide, you'd have to have a minimum lot size, or a lot, a lot large enough to reach the minimum lot size, which a standard subdivision would give you the same incentives that the preservation incentive would give at that point, because the, the house, in the house scale, would be on one lot, and the back lot would be a separate lot, which would have the same FAR requirements, or allowances, as the front lot. And so, to subdivide actually diminishes the impact and incentive of the preservation incentive. And it wouldn't be ineffective, if you wanted to subdivide, you would subdivide regardless, that you wouldn't use the preservation tool, most likely, but we can definitely look into it.
Good point, good point, and, and absolutely. It doesn't mitigate the flag lot and the cost of getting the utilities back to the back unit. A lot of the properties in the central part of the city can, they can be 70 feet, or they can be 100 feet, to the, to the back property line, or even further. Some of the lots in the central part of the city are about a quarter acre. They're narrow and deep. So there's definitely room to put something back there, but it's super expensive. And so that's the part that, that I really want to make sure that we all understand what we're talking about, and also the, the maybe inadvertent outcomes, if we end up inadvertently creating situations where we have a lot of flag lots, then what is the actual outcome of that? And will we, because it's a flag lot, will we actually get those units in the back of existing homes as a smaller? For me, the thousand square foot for an ADU was plenty, so I'm still, I still have a concern about 1,600 square feet. If you're gonna pick a, a factor, it would seem to be something that's rather smaller than just the average size of, of, especially in the central part of the city, the homes that already exist there.
And I, I think to speak to that, we can definitely take the utility factor into consideration and, and work with the utilities directly on how we can solve that problem. But, to speak to the 1,600, I think in Councilmember Kassar's motion, he had recommended that we allow an ADU larger, that was larger, up to 1,600 square feet. But, what we recommended in the code draft is that we just allow any use that's permitted on the site. So, a single-family house is a permitted use in the residential house scale zone, so you could just build a house, it doesn't need to be called an ADU, or you can build an ADU, and it doesn't have to be parked, well, all of these don't have to be parked under the preservation incentive. But, the, if you call it an ADU, it has an 1,100 square foot cap. If you call it a single-family house, it doesn't have that cap, but both would be permitted to be built under the preservation incentive.
You just said the ADU has 1,100 square foot cap?
Yes. If you, if you listed it as, on your, when you're, on your site plan, when you bring it in, if you list it as an ADU, it would be capped at 1,100 still.
But this, this discussion here talked about 1,600 for?
Page four is Councilmember Kassar's original motion.
Uh-huh.
That's what he had recommended, that, at the mo- in the previous draft, we had listed that only an ADU could be built under the preservation incentive, and under this draft, we're recommending that any use that's allowed on the site, or any use that's allowed in the zone can be built. So a single-family house can be built, so you could have your, single-family house that you're preserving, and then build a second, single-family house in the back, and that single-family house does not have the cap on it. So that speaks to Councilmember Kassar's request for a larger unit allowed without, without changing the cap for the ADU. So the ADU, if you built that, has an 1,100 square foot cap.
Okay, so in the text, it differentiates between ADUs capped at 1,100 and any other structure that can be as large as 1,600?
As large as your FAR allows, because there is an FAR cap for those units.
Okay. That helps in understanding this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Leslie, you used seven and a half minutes. My guess would be that if it would follow the same timing we did yesterday, it's about nine and a half minutes, if we'll adjust it, we get to the end there. Anne, you wanna go ahead?
I wanna step back a minute on the preservation incentive, just to, to help me, as I think about the framework. What we're trying to accomplish here is, we're trying to incent smaller, relatively more affordable units, multiple units, as opposed to one very large, single-family home, which is what's happening in our central city areas. We're having, we're tearing, tearing down, building larger, single-family homes that are, that are very, very expensive. So, that's what I'm understanding our goal is. So, so we need to align our incentives with the decision-making that occurs to decide to do one or the other. So I would just like to hear from you all, how you think this, this whole set of requirements does that? Does that make sense as a question? Or, do you think it does it? I would assume you are, you do, because you're bringing it forward. And what is it about it that's gonna help us accomplish that?
So, Councilmember, that, over time, I think we've had to add and balance the different provisions and the incentive, to try to accomplish that, and it, I think it started out as a, just a way to add units and preserve market rate. It's gotten a little bit more preservation provisions in there, based on feedback, now, but it's still, we think, has a, an attractive bonus, so that it's a way of preserving character, market rate affordable units, although they don't, they don't have to have any kind of income restriction, it's just?
Right, I know it's not.
What's on the lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and add units at, at the same time. So it's kind of, it's trying to do all of those things at once in an attractive package. But, whether it, whether it retains units that are considered affordable, just depends on where it's being utilized, you know, what exists on the lot.
I don't mean, I don't mean affordable, and, I, I mean relatively, a smaller unit is relatively more affordable than a larger unit. So what are the factors? When, when someone's making a decision, I know it's guesswork, but in our, in our thought, in our best thinking, what is the factors that's gonna push them over to keeping a lot, I mean, keeping it smaller, more smaller units than just rebuilding as a larger, single-family home?
I think if they, they have to have a, some idea of what they want to do with the extra units, if they want to sell them or rent them, if they, you know, they have to have a plan for what they want to do with, or some reason to get the extra units. They also have to have a lot that makes sense for the configuration, I mean, they've got to retain.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I'm really asking, and maybe this is a longer offline, you're looking puzzled, Jimmy, I'm really trying to understand. It's okay, I'm, it just means I'm not asking the question right. What, what I'm trying to understand is, are we really, are we accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish with this? And what is it about it that is helping us accomplish that? That's really what I'm, my question is.
I think from, if you put yourself in the mind of a developer, they, they, what, I'm guessing what they want is that FAR, they want that square footage that they couldn't otherwise get without the preservation incentive, and they get the extra units. If you're someone who's there already, you might want to have the extra units for an income stream, and, and then you have to retain part of your original structure, of course. But it's also, it, it's a little bit of an unknown, because it's a brand-new tool for Austin, and frankly, other cities don't really do this kind of thing.
Okay.
So it's, it is kind of uncharted territory.
Okay. So the thinking is that the square footage makes a difference for people in making a decision? That that's an incentive, right?
Right.
And to some extent, the extra units. So that's what we think might be what would, would kick people over into, into this bucket.
I think ha- having no parking requirement for the newly-added units is going to be helpful, especially on smaller lots, where that extra impervious cover, or the space needed for it, might make or break a project.
Okay. And, and y'all's best thinking, do you think this will be effective? I mean, just give me your opinion on that.
To, to speak to that, I will say, when we've gone out into the community and during our office hours and public testing and things like that, we've heard a lot of positive energy in the community about the preservation incentive. A lot of excitement from people who just want to build additional units to help stay in their home, or even from people who, like Greg said, who are developers, who that additional unit might help finance the project in general, and just add that additional unit to the market. But it is, it has definitely been well-received when we've, when we've spoken about it in the public, and people, people are excited to see what this project could, or what this tool could implement. Like Greg said, it's a brand-new concept, so we don't have, we will kind of be a leading city in, in how, and if it works, but I do think that there, the excitement generated around it is a definite good sign.
Okay, and can I just ask Peter, if you could give us your thoughts on it?
So, in, in addition to the, so the additional square footage or units, right, the, the original, or one of the intentions of this was concern regarding change to the character, right? Change, right? So the, so the idea that this would be a way to encourage the reuse of existing buildings, from sustainability perspective, as well as a sort of, how does my neighborhood look and feel when I walk down the street and, right, and walking around the neighborhood? And some of the models that we'll show later will, will reinforce that, and we showed other models earlier that, you know, speak to that. So, the, the, in terms of the value, in terms of the outcome, it is a, it is a, seems like it would be a good tool to balance your sort of dual concerns of, how do we maintain the character of our neighborhoods, and also accommodate some additional capacity in housing, housing units.
Okay. I would just want us to build in a calibration mechanism, or evaluation mechanism, just like we're doing with the Affordable Housing Program. To, to, because it is new, we need to continually assess whether we've got the right balance, because if we make it too difficult in all the requirements about what you have to meet in order to take advantage of it, then we could end up with people not, it's too hard to take advantage of. So, so I would just want us to evaluate it.
Sounds good. There was seven minutes. Jimmy, then Paige, then Kathy, then Peter.
So I, I, Peter, I think you've kind of covered what my thought was, is, is, you know, being clear about the intent of these different ideas, right? The preservation incentive wasn't about smaller units to be more affordable, it was about that kind of street frontage character question that folks have been frustrated about, that we see now in, in certain neighborhoods where homes are being torn down, and it's disruptive emotionally to them in their, in their communities. So I think that was the point of the, the preservation incentive. And I agree that an, an evaluation period, I mean, on all of the things that we're doing, we're gonna want a year from now, and two years from now, and three years from now to come back and say, well, how many people took advantage of the preservation bonus? How many people took advantage of the HORTAL Housing Bonus Program? Because we ultimately want them to do it. Because the alternative is, is what happens now, is that an older structure gets torn down, and a bigger, single-unit structure gets built, that doesn't seem to make really anybody happy, except for the person who owns the property that built it, made them pretty happy, I would imagine. Which is also kind of part of the, the, the reminder for us is that, especially in the R zones, property owners are not maximizing their economic power. They are, they are often making decisions based on their own desires for their own properties. And so it's not always going to be taken advantage of, because some people have the money and they want the bigger house. And that's not really something we have the power to change, although the graduated impervious cover is more of a tool towards that end, to say, if you're still gonna have this one ginormous house, then it's gonna have to, you're gonna have to scale back, hopefully incentivizing a second or third unit in those areas that, that have that, that ability. But I do like the evaluation, the reminder that this is not a decision, then it's set in stone for all eternity, that we're gonna have to go back and see exactly how the market reacted, and then adjust accordingly.
And, and I would just add one quick thing. It's also, it's also investors' decisions, because a lot of our neighborhoods, people are bringing in money to invest from, actually outside the city. So, a lot of these central city neighborhoods, it's not just the homeowner.
Yeah.
In a lot of, in a lot of cases, it's the investor. So we need to be thinking of both potentials when we're thinking about where the incentives are.
And that, that's an interesting question about whether or not it's a known ratio, how much housing turnover is an independently wealthy person deciding they want a bigger individual house in a central house neighborhood, and how much of it is a developer coalition trying to maximize cadre of, of invested profits.
I'm sure that data's out there.
There's some, some ratio, it's not 100% in either way. Yeah.
So I have, uh?
Sorry.
That's okay. I have you at, at, um, an additional quarter minute, and, and you with additional 30 seconds.
I just have a clarifying question on slide number five, where it talks about must increase the number of units by one. Is, is that at least one, in the case of like, an R2A? Like, I have a lot in my district, I wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yeah, it's, it's at least one, based, at least one compared to what's there today, just to ensure that total supply is going up.
Okay, and then could the preserved unit, if it's affordable, be that affordability trigger as well? Like, if the house in front is affordable, and you want to build a duplex in the back, but you're an R2, would, would that work?
You could do that, I don't understand the relationship to affordability, you, you can do that.
Just because of like, the affordability bonus of being able, if you commit to one of the units being affordable, you can get an additional unit? As long as you have the space and?
There's no, there's no affordable housing bonus in that zone.
Okay.
So the only way to actually get that extra unit is with the preservation incentive.
Okay.
The, the bonus incentive for affordability starts at R4.
For, to take part in the preservation incentive, you don't have to have any affordability component. So you could just, if your house is 30 years old, and you preserve it, you can qualify, and you don't have to live in that house any longer, you could live in one of the back units, or the back unit, and rent out the front unit, but there's no, you don't have to do anything specific affordability-wise.
Okay. So in the R2 zones, you can only get two?
You could have three units total in the R2, so if you had a house in the front, a duplex isn't allowed use, so you could build a duplex in the rear.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll show you an example later.
Okay. Just want to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Minute and a half, Paige, Kathy, you're up.
I have a couple of quick questions, and then some longer ones, so I just want to frame it that way, so that I preserve my time. With regard to the preservation incentive, does the, can you clarify whether the preservation incentive, in terms of what it's preserving, refers to the facade? And could we add language in there that makes that really clear?
It, it does, and actually, the-
Not the rear.
Right. There was language in there indicating it was the front wall, and it was inadvertently removed, absolutely.
Okay, so that'll be a clarification that happens. Is the private front, front, private frontage, as referred to in the preservation incentive, a porch?
Yes.
Okay. Can a, and I'm assuming that a house preserved through the preservation incentive cannot be relocated, it needs to remain in place.
That's correct.
Okay. And then I had a couple broader questions. I'm still trying to figure out how the subdivision, there were some amendments related to subdivision, and I'm trying to figure out whether those have been embedded within the preservation incentive or not, but before we get to that, I wanted to ask, I know you said that as you went around the city, there was a lot of interest in, in this tool, and since we have some areas of the city that are, you know, most of the areas I represent, you can already have two units. There are, are areas in our city, I know, I think Anderson Mill is one, and others, where they actually have deed restrictions that restrict them to one unit, and so this would be a citywide change that would allow them, allow people in that area to have three units. And I wondered if you were seeing the same level of interest and excitement in those areas, and are they working to change those deed restrictions?
I will say, we, we heard it generally from various community events, I can't speak specifically to which areas of the city were most excited about the preservation incentive, and I didn't speak to anyone about deed restrictions when speaking about the preservation incentive. I know deed restrictions are something that is complicated for the city, and the law department has weighed in on.
Right, they would be private, they would need to be privately enforced, but-
Exactly.
But we are, we do have those pockets of neighborhoods where I think you are prohibited from both subdividing and adding an additional unit beyond the one, so that will certainly be, you know, as, as a citywide tool, something that comes up. So with, so there was, the amendment had with it the subdivision, the ability to subdivide a lot if the preservation incentive is utilized, and it's not clear to me how that has worked into the draft code. So if I decide to preserve my house, but subdivide the pieces out, how are you then going to monitor where the, I mean, I'm just struggling with where the impervious cover, I mean, does each of those subdivided lots retain the same impervious cover? I mean, does each of those subdivided lots retain the same impervious cover limits? I mean, if you have one that is a house and then one is a duplex, I mean, where? I think it would be helpful to maybe see that graphed out. Like if, if there's a house and it's subdivided, does each of those, what happens to each of those resulting lots? And does it look exactly, do all of the entitlements remain exactly as they would have had that lot remained intact?
So to speak to the subdivision, as I mentioned earlier, the benefit of the preservation incentive really lies in the lot staying intact. Um, and the, the primary unit staying on the same lot as the additional units. Um, to do a subdivision, the lot would have to be large enough to meet the minimum, um, lot area for, for a subdivision. So in an R two, it'd be five thousand square feet.
Can I stop you there for just a second? Because I think part of the amendment was that there would not be minimum lot sizes to consider, um, waiving minimum lot size. So am I to assume then that that piece did not get worked into the code? And I, I think there may be more to ask here, and I think I'll limit it at that, so I preserve my time for later. But if you could just, Brent, let me know whether that piece of the amendment came forward.
Sure. Brent Lloyd, LDC team, and, um, this goes to broader issues that I think, um, emerged from several different amendments on the D I S, so I'll just speak to it. Um, so we encountered some difficulties with, um, trying to come up with a simple subdivision process or an amended plat that would be a lot, uh, using an amended plat process to create lots. And the challenges we encountered were lowering minimum lot sizes. That was definitely a part of at least one of the amendments. And we have had some offline discussions, uh, with, uh, council member Harper Madison's office, that really what that would be focusing on is townhouse lots, um, which is a special kind of, uh, type that already has a very low minimum lot size. And we think there may be some opportunities to explore that. Um, but as far as just generally lowering the lot size for the missing middle zones in particular, we think that that would present some real challenges in the sense that the missing middle zones are predicated on the idea that you're not going to create more freestanding structures on their own lots. They're really designed for multi-unit, uh, to incentivize sort of a multi-unit style. So s, lowering minimum lot sizes to allow further subdivision in those zones would really create some challenges with respect to how the zones themselves are structured. And additionally, a lot of the times where people would wanting, would be wanting to do that type of subdivision, it would be a situation where you would have a structure in the back and you would have to dedicate some easements. And then you're immediately out of the simple subdivision process. So, um, so there were just a lot of challenges with respect to that. If we narrow the minimum lot size, further lowering the lot size to townhouse lots, I think we definitely, that's something that we can work with. And, and of course, we're happy to keep talking to council about these issues and, and to receive your direction. But we encountered, bottom line, we encountered some technical challenges in fully implementing some of council's direction on simple subdivision and lowering lot sizes.
Okay, thanks. So there is, so the lot size remained the same with subdivisions with the preservation incentive?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I'm sorry if I gave you too long.
No, 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 the other information was good too. I just wanna make sure I understood exactly how it worked in this instance. Thank you.
Now, I've been waiting for almost fifteen years to get this correct, because I, I did a, I preserved my house in the front and built an A D U in the back. And I have six hundred and forty square feet of space there that I had to build a car garage. And I cannot use it because I have no air conditioning. I have no shower in the, in the restroom area. So it's just being used as a storage place. And it's very disappointing that I couldn't invite my friends and guests from out of town so they could have a place to stay. Of course, I'm using the front part, half of it as a revenue source, so I can stay there. But I, the, the reason I was, uh, I wasn't bringing that up is I thought that, you know, what we did, and I, and that's the correction that I wanted to see is, we tapped into the existing energy meter and ran a line to the back. And we tapped into the water meter and ran, ran that one all the way to the back. And that saved us almost twenty thousand dollars just by doing that. Are we looking into doing that also when you have your preservation where you can run, tap into the existing meter? If you're not gonna sell your, your place, you know, can, have y'all looked into that?
Uh, council member, I think, yes. The, the short answer about whether you can do that is, uh, it depends on the exact nature of what you're adding. But yes, we, we will, it's, we don't, it may not necessarily be a code item, but we'll pursue that with utilities for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand, um, how much space can be added to an existing preserved house? Um, the code language says in twenty-three, three C, thirty-sixty C B, the preserved structure does not count towards the maximum FAR allowed for a site in the base zone. But later the code says the preserved structure may not be modified or altered to exceed the maximum FAR allowed for a site in the base zone. Um, so let me give you an example. So on a seven thousand square foot lot, you could add to an existing older and smaller structure to get it to twenty-eight hundred square feet, not including exemptions. And none of that would count towards your FAR? And then at that point, you could construct two additional structures that get their FAR maximums from the table in the R two A section. Is that correct?
Yes. So the, the new units being added are constrained by the F A R limit in the zone and the preserved unit is a, is as well. It's sort of like, uh, they're both on the same lot, but independent of each other as far as F A R calculations go. All the other site development standards still apply to the lot, but as far as F A R goes, they're capped independently.
Okay. So I thought that the state of purpose of the preservation incentive was to preserve existing market affordable units. So why would we allow the older, smaller housing stock that is some of our market affordable portfolio in our existing neighborhoods to max out on their FAR? So now I've got a, I could go from a thirteen hundred square foot house to a twenty-eight hundred square foot house. And I've got a twenty-eight hundred square foot house, got two units in the back. We have no definition of unit, so I don't have to rent those out. Um, now I've got McMansion on steroids.
So previously, there were no F A R limits on the newly added units. So that was added. And then, um, we wanted to put some limitation on how the preserved unit could be expanded. And, and frankly, we had a lot of, uh, back and forth about what that should be, because if it's a percentage, then you're penalizing existing smaller units to some degree. And it was hard to land on a flat amount. So we just decided, why not just make it what it is in the zone? And in that way, the existing unit is granted the entitlements it would otherwise have, but it has to per, still preserve the front facade and, uh, have those preservation features. It gives flexibility for the existing homeowner to keep their home, but, but expand it or add square footage or do a remodel. Um, but it, it is limited just by that, that zone F A R.
So this just seems really exploitable, um, for people who have money, who wanna have a big house in these areas. Um, we're not, I mean, the point was not to preserve the front of the house. The point was to not have everything go to the landfill. Um, and to keep things smaller and preserve the market affordable house. Um, in neighbors that I'm, neighborhoods that I'm familiar with, you will get your twenty-eight hundred square foot house, you will get your two units up to the max, and nobody else will live in it at all. They'll put their little, I mean, we have no definition of a unit. Um, you know, if they have a pool, the pool doesn't count in impervious cover. One of those units will be a pool house and you'll have your, um, guest house. And it's not gonna be anyone, it's not gonna be anyone living in it.
Just to clarify, we, we do have a definition of dwelling unit in the code.
Okay, what is the new definition of dwelling unit in the code?
Um, just give me one moment to look it up.
Um, and while you're at it, can you give me the definition of an attic?
You want me to come back while, when they find that answer?
Um, as long as I get the answer.
Okay. Uh, Greg?
Thank you all for working so hard on this. Um, and I know that y'all have been changing it and try, and doing your best to deal, wrestle with the pros and cons. Um, I think that, um, to the, I, I do think that it's really important for us to be thinking about how, if somebody sells their whole house and, you know, cause they're moving for a job, how do we encourage the preservation incentive to get used instead of a scrape when it's, uh, say a home builder that buys it? But then also, uh, to figure out how homeowners can use this as an, as a tool, as council member Renteria and others have noted, to add an income stream and not feel like their best option is just to sell their whole house to be scraped. And so I think we're trying to wrestle with both of those. Um, in that vein, I think, one question I'd like y'all to think about, I don't need an answer for it, but I just wanna express it, cause I'm, if it makes sense, I'd love for y'all to let me know, maybe we can make an amendment, is thinking of homeowners in my district that I've talked to that are interested in doing this, the provision that you have to bring everything up to current code, even if it's not health safety, um, might be something for y'all to think about. I think, see, there's other exceptions in the code where it says you have to cover health safety portions, but not everything. So let's take a look at that, cause I don't wanna limit that, make, make it harder for existing homeowners to, if they already have a house in A D U, but that's where their whole family lives, is those two units, and this creates the opportunity to create a rental unit. I want to make that easily accessible, so let's take a look at that. Um, I understand that you may not want to be able to move the house from here to Leander, but on the relocation, if you need to make a little bit of room, cause you've got a tree or something, it, I would love y'all, for y'all to think about how we still have the neighborhood character, but if somebody has to move the house some, what that would look like. Um, uh, and we voted to move the number from thirty years to fifteen years, because I don't think it's just about preserving the thirty-year-old house. It's the person in, who has a twenty-year-old house that will be thirty years, their house eventually will be thirty years old, but they might not still live there if they can't, um, better utilize their land. And so I think I'll bring something back to bring us, that age number back down. I recognize it said consider, but I'm likely to bring an amendment that just says to, to, to do it. Um, so my, um, my, my question, I'll, I wanna meet with staff about the subdivision question, because I do think that, for example, somebody on a corner lot might want to more easily subdivide off one of those units and just sell it. People have raised here the question, how can a homeowner build new units if you don't have the capital? Well, it's just easier to be able to say, you know what, I just don't need this portion of my lot, but I do need the money. Um, so I wanna keep looking into that. But I guess the only thing that I would love to hear a little bit more from y'all is some of the new roofline requirements, how y'all see those working out? And like you debated everything, can you give me some of the, sort of the pros and cons from y'all's debate about how you came to the roofline amendments?
Uh, the, the roofline amendments and the front facade requirements, uh, for retention, um, did come about based on the community input that we got. Um, some of it from the historic, um, stakeholders, uh, some of it from our own historic staff. Um, we talked a lot to our historic staff about making sure that it, um, that it would go some ways towards preserving, uh, character, but not be too onerous from, um, you know, not, not tread too much into the historic, preservation part of, of what we usually think of as historic preservation. So, um, you know, it's, it's the front wall. Uh, there's a requirement that you've gotta preserve up to the ridge line or, um, some distance behind the front, front facade. So, so we don't think it's gonna be too onerous. Um, we think it's doable without, without being too heavy-handed.
Okay. I, I would love to see some examples of things that you couldn't do that, um, and I imagine that there's some things that this would block that we think that's good to block. But I would wanna know what sorts of things might somebody reasonably want to do that are just sort of in the gray area of, uh, well, they couldn't do this with the roofline amendment. You know, ju, ju, I just wanna sort of know what the, what the range is there. I agree that knocking out the whole front of the house, that shouldn't count for the preservation incentive. But if somebody's adding, I, you know, in some of my neighborhoods, folks have added stuff to the side that are all the way up on the front, uh, and then have it wrap around, those sorts of things. I, I would just be interested in what that ends up, um, looking like. But overall, um, I, I agree that it could be a really powerful tool. I'm glad we're leading on this, um, across the country. I think it's a good way to have more density in our neighborhoods while preserving units. And so I really wanna get this one right, cause I think it's one of the more powerful tools in the new code.
Okay, great. Um, we're ready to, uh, do you have the definition yet?
I do.
Okay.
Um, dwelling unit is also known as residential dwelling unit or residential unit. Is a permanent space containing one or more rooms designed for human habitation with provisions for cooking, sleeping, and sanitation.
What about attic?
Attic is not defined in our code, because it's defined in the, um, building code. So it's not defined in the land development code, but would be found there.
And how do they define it in the building code?
I would need to, um, have one of our, um, building code experts find that for me, but I can get that back for you later in that session.
Okay, so to figure out what you're doing with the attic exemption, you have to go to the building code to get the definition of attic? Is that, I just have people trying to understand the balance of what you, what you can build. And I, I just wanna, so that definition in the building code is gonna be sufficiently clear so that we're gonna be able to know what's an attic? And what's just space?
Uh, Laura Keating, planning and zoning. Um, we can get you the definition from the building code. Um, it's, uh, some of the plan reviewers, you know, prefer to not redefine things within our land development code that are defined, uh, in the building code just to, uh, avoid confusion.
And I understand that, I'm just, I'm getting questions about how you put all of these pieces together. And I'm trying to provide some clarity on that. So we find that at definition of attic in building code, and that should be, of attic in the building code, and that should be clear enough, um, to do that. Um, I would like to know, um, so in alter amendment number four, um, I asked staff to come back with code language and modeling demonstrating the impacts on housing and affordability capacity to eliminate attic, garage, and balcony exemptions from FAR calculations in residential house scale and transition zones. Um, staff should prepare information to just demonstrate what, if any, impact eliminating those exemptions would have on housing unit capacity. Where can I find that code language and modeling that this amendment asked staff to prepare?
So, um, maybe in the next part of the presentation, it's gonna, it's gonna show modeling. And in our modeling, um, we have shown, in a different zones, what unit sizes are. And we've included, um, the way, we've calculated the unit size and F A R based on, um, these exemptions that are, uh, similar to current code. Um, and so it, maybe that'll answer some of your questions, and then we can have a further discussion about that afterwards.
I'm, I'm happy to, to look at those and hear that. But part of what I'm trying to understand is the impact of those exemptions and the size of those exemptions on the size of the houses that we're getting and the affordability that we're getting. And without actually modeling, what happens if you have no exemptions versus those other things? Then it's hard to tell whether those exemptions are helpful. And, you know, there's, there's different ways that these are incorporated or not incorporated into McMansion now. And we're not carrying over McMansion. And, and the choices we make here have a big impact on the size of what we, what we get. Um, so I hope that we will get that modeling to see, okay, there's a problem with it if we just, um, get away, do away with exemptions altogether.
And you'll see in, in the modeling later when we, when we describe these, what we're trying to figure out is how to, as council directed, create opportunities for more units, right? Um, not necessarily larger units, right? And so when we get to the smaller end of the lot area, this is where, um, getting more units on a, on a five thousand square foot lot, for example, uh, becomes more difficult. And so, um, in terms of your request, as Laura said, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to describe and talk about the effective sort of F A R that you get if you provide these exemptions. Um, and then, uh, you will also see how much smaller the units get, um, if the exemptions weren't available. I mean, that's the best way that we have available to get to this direction.
Both of those.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, we're ready to go on to the next session? Pam?
So if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is that the rationale for not exempting attic and, and the garage completely is to get more units? Is that the thinking? Cause, cause my question is the same. Because, because my question is the same as Councilmember Alter's, why not, seems overly complex to allow those to be exempted, plus they're part of the whole structure, so why wouldn't we, why are we exempting them?
Could we go back to the slides? So the, if you look at the first, for example, the idea here is that up to 200 square feet of the garage, which is less of an exemption than McMansion today, right, is allowed. So for example, if I did a two-car garage, I would get exemption for one parking space, but the other parking space that I decided to build beyond the minimum parking requirement is counting against my FAR, right?
Yeah, I understand that, I don't understand why. If, if, FAR is the simplest way to talk about what all is, you know, just the size of what you're building.
That's right, yeah.
So it seems that we should just set the FAR and, and not exempt out parts of a, parts of a structure.
Well, that, that would be an alternative, is to increase the allowable FARs and just count everything, right? And so again, what we're, what we're trying to work within is staying with the point four that you have today in McMansion and has been in previous drafts, use that as a base reference, and find simpler ways to allow these exemptions as, as was directed in the council direction.
Okay, well, we can talk about that further, so.
Okay. All right, let's go on to the next section.
Okay, so next, we, we want to go through the house scale residential testing, so this is going to go from R2 to RM1. And to describe a little bit of how we're working here, we took our direction, of course, from city council direction, as was mentioned, discussed earlier, of focusing on, and really managing and calibrating the FARs as it relates to the number of units. So the increases in the FAR would occur as more units are provided. So that's generally the, the operating direction. What we've done is, in terms of the process, we, we modeled a lot of different things to understand this, to confirm the, the past recommendations, and also to fine tune some of these standards. So what we're going to show is models on the minimum parcel size, so 5,000 square feet is the proposed minimum, and we also did a lot of data analysis to understand what are the median parcel sizes, right? So how does, how does land today and how do parcels today exist? We're going to talk about modeling of base and bonus scenarios. The assumptions here are assuming a one-to-one parking is provided, except in the bonus and preservation scenario, so there'll be fewer parking in, as the code allows. And critical here to the testing and understanding how to calibrate is understanding where FAR or I, or impervious cover are both, are governing factors in limiting the, the unit count, right? Because that, well, we'll, we'll explain that a little bit more, but that's basically the method of how we're working here. So we started by analyzing a lot of data sets to understand really what stands today. And so what you see on the left side is all of the single two-unit and three- and four-unit residential units in Austin that were built prior to 1990. So this is our 30-year, so this is helpful for us to sort of understand the 30-year preservation incentive on the one side. And on the other side, we've got the numbers for everything that has been built since 1991. And you understand, I mean, you can see that a significant amount of year growth has happened. I mean, nearly 30% of all this housing stock has been built in the last 30 years. And what you also see is appears the median building sizes. So of houses that were built, single-family houses that were built before 1990, the median building size is 1,531 square feet. Since 91, the median size has grown from a single-family house to 2,236 square feet. When we looked at two-unit and three- and four-unit buildings, we saw a similar trend in terms of the size of the units have grown in the last 30 years. The other part of this that's useful to look at is just how much single-family uses or single-unit uses comprise your housing stock in the city. So when we said before that middle housing is missing in Austin, that's pretty clear that it's missing, right? What we also did is look at, to understand a little bit more of what's happening in the marketplace in the last 10 years of construction, the staff looked at, on computer, we looked at all the residential permit data. Again, in this case, looking at one unit, it'd use two-unit, three to 10 units, and developments that are 11 units and more. And here, the median building size in the last 10 years for a single unit is 2,574 square feet. For the two-unit is 2,574 square, square feet for the building size, so you could divide by two if you want to understand the average. And then for the three to 10, the median building size is about 4,000 square feet, and our calculations on the unit size end up being about 1,900, 2,000 square feet per unit. And here again, this chart shows that in the last 10 years, you've mostly built single-family detached and multi-unit buildings, and in terms of the missing middle, really very few. But this data is very helpful for us to understand, how should we be calibrating the FARs, to understand how big are the units out there? This is a little bit of a exercise in, you know, not too small, that the market's not going to build it, not too big, that it, it goes against your goals of creating more affordability and preserving the character. So what we also did is we looked at a lot of comparable buildings, products that are on the market today across the region, from small units, and the size of units in multi-unit configurations of three-unit buildings or multi-unit buildings. We also looked at micro-units, and how big are micro-units, right? So with this information of understanding the data of all the buildings that stand today, and some of the characters when they've been built, looking specifically at the last 10 years of all residential building permits, and the characteristics of the properties that were developed, and also looking at what's for sale, what's on the market, what's actually available on the market in, in the Austin region, we use these kind of information points. So for example, we looked at comps, and we were looking for, for example, smaller units, like configurations. So here's an example on the left of a three-bedroom, two-bath unit at 1,300 square feet, it's a single-story unit. On the right is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath configuration that's just under, or, yeah, just under 1,300 square feet, right? So we're trying to figure out what is, what's a good number, or what's a target number for these FAR calibrations. So that was the data and the research that went into, again, confirming the, the standards as, as, and refining them. So when you look at R2A and R2B, the map on the left shows you the areas that are mapped R2A or, or R2B, and they comprise just over 21% of the city. The median parcel size is 8,528 square feet. So that's the median parcel size. Remember, in the R2, the minimum lot size by the zoning is 5,000 square feet, but as we find it out there, as land is so divided today, the median parcel size is, is above the minimum 5,000 square feet. Parking space is one per unit, no parking for an ADU, and as we've covered in the past, 25-foot top plate height and 35-feet overall height. What you do see in terms of the number of units, and again, this is toward the encouraging more units rather than fewer units, it is an R2 zoning, so with two units, you get an additional impervious cover of 40, of 45, of 5%, right? So that's a bit of an incentive, as intended, to get more two-units over singles. And with regard to the FAR, it carries forward the point four, similar to McMansion today, or 1,300 square feet, which is large, whichever is larger, because on a 5,000 square foot lot, you, you end up with a much smaller total FAR, or total floor area possible. And so in testing this, here are some examples. So in this case, this is a single-family development on a 5,000 square foot lot, which is the minimum lot area by the code. FAR, as you can read down, the zone standard is point four, 1,300 square feet per unit, and 40% impervious cover max. As illustrated here, and it's the building in the middle, this is on a 5,000 square foot lot, we were able to create a 1,940 square foot unit. In this case, it comes in at about point 3.9 FAR, which is pretty close to the limit, and it's at 40% impervious cover. So here's an example of what a house could be, a single-unit house could be on a 5,000 square foot lot, and in this case, impervious cover and FAR both are kind of the constraints for how big this house could be, right? The next example is a single-family with an ADU. So this is a new-build situation on a 5,000 square foot lot. The ADU is limited to 1,100 square feet, and the FAR, once again, is point four or 1,300 square feet for the primary unit. The impervious cover goes up to 45%, again, to, as part of that incentive to get more units. So in this case, as illustrated, what you see is a primary house in the front and the ADU. The primary house was able to get to 1,300 square feet, and we're showing the ADU at 1,100 square feet. Obviously, the distribution of that could be different, but that's what this model is showing. And here again, you can see that the FAR for this illustration is at a point 4.8 effective, but essentially, we utilized the 1,300 square feet, right? And the impervious cover is at 43%, so it's below impervious. So in this case, for this model, it is, again, sort of showing out the maxed-out condition, if you will, where impervious cover and FAR are, and, or in this case, 1,300 square foot per unit is the limit. The next case is a two-unit or duplex on a 5,000 square foot lot. Again, this is the minimum lot area for the zone, and, and the incentive here is allowing up to a 45% impervious cover. The FAR remains the same. So in this illustration, you see what a duplex might look like with two surface parking lots. And in this case, the sort of effective FAR would be a point 5.2, but again, we're using the 1,300 square feet per unit, and the impervious cover lands at 43%, just under the impervious cover limit. So in this case, it's constrained by the maximum size of a unit of 1,300 square feet per unit. Now, this is an R2 using the median, close to the median lot size of, of parcels zoned So in this case, you can see the unit in this model is 1,700 square feet, the FAR is at point four, it's limited at a point four, and the impervious cover ends up being 34% well under the maximum. So in this case, this is an example where it's maxed out because the floor area is being maxed out, and the street level view gives you an idea of how that might appear on the street. And then this last one is a preservation incentive in an R2 on the median lot size. So in this case, each of the new units are 1,700 square feet, and you can see them, on the drawing on the right, you can see them in, in the, the, the two, the twin buildings connected by garages. Their FAR is at a point four, and in this configuration, the previous cover was also 34%, well under the 50% that's allowed by the zone. And so in this case, the preserved unit, which is the one-story house in the front, was a 1,464 square foot house, that two units, two 1,700 square foot units were added. So in this case, this was maxing out the FAR available, right? And in this case, impervious, there's still more impervious cover available to use, but couldn't use it, was, you know, didn't need to cover it, so that, that's a good solution. This also speaks to the stair exemption, because in this case, what this allows is buildings to go more vertical, which, rather than spreading, which helps, is in service of reducing impervious cover, but allowing the square footage to achieve a market, marketable unit, in this case, 1,700 square feet. So this 1,700 square foot unit is just below about, it's pretty close to what the median unit in a duplex that has been built in Austin in the last 10 years. So it's, it's not an, out of, sort of theoretical example. So R3, R3 is mapped, you can sort of see where it's mapped in those darker specks, it's 0.19% of the city. And in this, you can see how, in the table, you can see how one to two units basically mirror what R2 standards are, and then as we get to three units, there's more impervious cover allowed and more, a little bit more FAR allowed. As a house scale residential zone, similar height requirements apply. So here's an example, again, on the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, what a three-unit configuration could look like. In this case, the FAR is point five, the code is proposing a point six, and here, impervious cover becomes the delimiting factor. In fact, I think most in all R3 situations, impervious cover is the governor more than FAR is. In this case, the unit sizes would be 836 square feet, so three units on a 5,000 square foot lot. On a 7,000 square foot lot, which is the median lot size of all lots zoned R3, or proposed to be zoned R3, the unit size that we were able to achieve is just over 1,000 square feet. The FAR is at point 4.4, and here again, impervious cover was the, the limiting factor of the building footprint, as well as the driveway and parking associated with servicing the building. In the R3 preservation scenario, we were able to get 1,026 square feet units, three of them. Here again, the FAR is below the limit, and impervious cover is the, is the governing factor. The preserved unit is the house in front, the one-story house in front, and that represents 1,300 square feet, right? So here's an example where the combination of the existing house and the additional three units, I mean, there's a little bit of room in terms of the new units that are added and not hitting the maximum FAR. And so in this case, the overall FAR of the site under the preservation situation is sort of closer to what the base FAR would be if I didn't do the preservation. So this is, this is actually one of those examples of, you know, with the intention of maintaining the character of the street, the preservation of an existing house, that incentive might allow sort of more utilization of the land than what is today. In other words, it would incent, rather than adding significantly to an existing house or replacing it, getting more units on the site. And what we found in our analysis is all of the properties, at least today, so looking back today, going back up to 1990, the average FAR was below two. Something like one, there was point eight, 1.8 FAR. So there's a lot of, if you will, underutilized floor area in properties 30 years old, older than 30 years. R4 comprises 1, 1 and 1/2% of the city, and this is the first missing middle zone, the first zone that bonuses are available for income-restricted housing. The median size of the parcels here are just under 8,000 square feet. So similar to before, basically, the number of units and the previous cover and FAR carry forward from the, from the carry forward from the previous zones with the idea that as you get above five units, the incentive of FAR and the bonus FAR appears. The other bonus components here is, while in general for base zoning development, the twenty-five-foot top plate and thirty-five-foot overall applies, there's a ten-foot height bonus in the top plate and a ten-foot height bonus. So essentially, one additional floor if one is doing income-restricted housing in an R4 property. So when we look at a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet, as the code allows, a point six FAR and a fifty-five percent impervious cover, this illustration is showing you what we were able to achieve, which is ending up being a small unit, just under six hundred square feet per unit. We get four of them. The FAR is at a point four seven, so below the point six FAR. And here again, is an example where impervious cover is actually more, more the limit than FAR is. So in a different design configuration, for example, if there were more cantilevered portions of this building, there's additional FAR that could be used to make the units a little bigger. This is the maxed-out version of a bonus development on a five thousand square foot lot, the minimum lot area for R4. And in this case, these would probably be more closer to a microunit scale of two hundred square feet per unit. And so the FAR is at a point three two. And here again, impervious cover becomes the delimiting factor. The R4, in terms of a base, here, we're modeling at the median lot size at around eight thousand square feet. And in this case, you could do a base development of ending up with about a thousand forty square feet per unit. The FAR was at point five two, and impervious cover was the limit. So here again, impervious cover is the primary factor limiting how many units or how big the units could be. Here's the maxed-out version of an, of eight units on a eight thousand square foot lot. And so the unit size that we were able to achieve was eight hundred square feet per unit. We hit the FAR max, and we hit the impervious cover max. So in this case, in this configuration, this, of course, again, would be a income-restricted bonus scenario. And finally, the RM1. RM1s were mapped in fewer areas than previous. And so they now comprise point eight nine percent of the city. The median parcel size for RM1s is just over seventy-four hundred square feet. The calibration of the FAR and the impervious cover carries forward from the previous zones, and then begins to move only at the place where it allows or incents more units. At a point eight or a plus one for the bonus at seven units or more. I'm sorry, the six, at six units, it actually goes up to sixty percent impervious cover and point eight FAR. And so here's a model of an RM1 base condition on a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet. It shows six units. And in this case, we were able to achieve six hundred fifty square feet units, six of them. The FAR is at point seven eight. The limit by the code is point eight. And we are at about a fifty-nine percent impervious cover. So in this case, both impervious cover and FAR are the constraints for a six-unit condition. If we were to, and I apologize, I don't have a model of it, but if, if we were to do a bonus version of this, I would be able to get ten units, so four more units, and additional five feet. So I'd actually be able to configure this building into a four-story building. And so you could, you could, given this footprint, you could configure four additional units in an additional floor on this building. So it could be a very similar configuration with just one more floor. Okay? Okay, I know, that's a lot. That, that's just like the highlights of a lot of different models. I'm sorry, we have two more models. Thank you. The RM1 bonus versions, right? Okay, so this is the bonus scenarios of getting up to ten. And in this case, they would be those much smaller units, again, at two hundred square feet each. The FAR, you can see, is at point four rather than point eight. And again, remember, this is for a five thousand square foot lot. So this is maxing out the smallest lot that's possible. And impervious cover is at sixty percent. So here, we are, we're really constrained by impervious cover more than FAR at this point. And there may be some configurations of the units that could be modified here that would allow a little bit more generous size in the, in the units. But these are, you know, very compact, very efficient unit sizes. And that's, that's what it might look like. When we looked at the median lot size in the RM1s, that's at seventy-five hundred square feet. Six unit, a base case, would be a thousand square feet per unit. And here, we kind of maxed out at FAR and impervious cover, a point eight FAR and sixty percent impervious cover. And this is the one that I meant to say could be, if you did the bonus and you wanted to get to ten, you could add four more units and a fourth, configure it as a four-story building.
All right? Questions? Allison?
I just wanted to start with a very basic question. Do your models include taking advantage of the exemptions? And how did you factor the exemptions into your models?
Yeah, so the, the models include taking advantage of the exemptions. So because we typically provided one parking space per unit, they would take advantage of that two hundred square foot exemption, the stair exemptions, as well as whatever attic space was built. And so like in the single-family model, that's a situation where the attic space that was exempted was about four hundred square feet. In some of the smaller buildings, it would be a smaller number of attic space based on the roof form that would be exempt.
Okay, so when we see the unit size, that is not including whether there's a parking space, does not include attic, does not include stairs?
Correct.
Or balconies? Okay, thank you. Allison, let's go.
Okay. Leslie?
I wanted to make sure my math was right on slide twenty-three. And this is the eighty-five hundred square foot lot as the median with the R2 preservation. And I think, Peter, you said that there would be two seventeen hundred square foot units on that lot plus the, the original structure, which is listed here, is the fourteen sixty-four. So I was curious where you got the FAR. Because this, because when I do two seventeen hundred square foot and the fourteen sixty-four, I come up almost five thousand, so.
So the fourteen hundred sixty-four square feet for the preserved unit?
Right, right.
And that's what we were talking about earlier?
Right.
Is that that square footage is not counted in the FAR. So what is counted in the FAR is just what is added to the site. So in this case, the two units. The two seventeen hundred square foot units.
So then how would that work? Okay. So you don't count the size of the original structure, which is how you keep it at point four FAR? Even though that isn't, it's almost a ninety-seven, a point nine seven FAR for all three of the structures added together? That's if you're dividing it by five thousand. If you're dividing it by the eighty-five hundred, then you get a point five seven FAR.
Correct, so the effective FAR would be point five seven. But we, we were including the units that counted towards FAR. So I apologize if that was a little confusing in the, in the table.
Well, it, it makes me really think about how we are trying to incentivize and if we are actually doing more harm than good. I'm not sure how, depending on where this might occur, where it might be built, what the easements would be, whether there would be any lot-to-lot flooding, just the actual, the actual impact beyond the theoretical, the actual impacts on the ground. Do we have a sense of what the easements, the setbacks, easements on these properties?
So we're, we're showing typical lots. So in, in this situation, the model is constrained by the setbacks of the zone, but there's no easement shown in this example, which might constrain a lot further.
Can you do one of these showing the easements? Because that, that would be the reality, right? We would have easements that we would need to take into consideration. It would subtract out the buildable area.
In this example, this is a corner lot. And so the, the units directly face onto streets, so there wouldn't be any access easements of any kind?
There's no access easements of any kind because it's on a quarter lot. But you would have two sides of four that would be ostensibly adjacent to something else. I don't understand.
The properties, the two additional units would face one street, and then the original house faces another street. So they don't need an access easement to get from one, from the entrance of, the front of the lot to the back of the lot because they can just access it from a different side?
Assuming that you can actually have street access on both sides, which isn't necessarily the case.
I'm, I'm just saying, in this example, it's a, it's a corner lot, so it wouldn't be necessary.
And the easements I was talking about would be the utility setbacks. I'm using setback and easement interchangeably.
Again, this is, since this is so new, this is something that we would need to work with the utilities on and to work out how this would go, be operable. Just like when accessory dwelling units are allowed citywide, that's another thing that, that had to be worked out at the time the ADUs were permitted. This is something that we would need to continue collaborations with the utilities on.
Okay. Jimmy?
These diagrams are, are pretty helpful. I can imagine that it took a lot of effort to pull this together. So I just want to thank you all for, for really giving us this level of example, especially with the lot size difference, because I think that's really important for people to think about how things will actually get built. You know, there's a, there's an instinct to take a extreme example and then apply that rhetorically across the entire community. But every time you go into another chapter of the code, you find another reason why this won't get built. You don't find other chapters of the code that make things bigger. You only find more requirements that make things smaller. So it is, it is far more infinitely probable that these, that these developments are difficult to build on most lots or challenging in most ways. And because we have a city of a certain size, we can't build a zoning code with, you know, two hundred thousand zones. I mean, that's probably why we were writing it in the first place, because we were starting to do two hundred thousand zones. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see the way this lays out. And it gives us, I think, some good starting point to acknowledge that this type of development is really compatible with, with the buildings that are, that are currently on the ground. It will mean more people. And I know there are some folks in the community that are, that are concerned about what more people means, but, you know, we've, we've tried long enough to say you can't have more people, and we know what that means, so you can't do that anymore. All, all you end up doing is, in some cases, codifying institutional segregation and racism if you do it the way we continue to do it. So I'm excited to see these changes and especially see them diagrammed because it really helps fill that gap in the mind's eye about what we're talking about. So thanks.
Anybody, before we move on? Kathy?
I have a couple of questions. And I guess, you know, I'm familiar with the areas where this has been mapped in my district. I was going to ask Councilmember Flanagan if he wanted to elaborate on, on where R4 and RM1 were mapped in his district and kind of what's in the surrounding area. Maybe we can pick that up next week, because I'm not familiar with, with many instances of it in, in his district. I am familiar with where it's been mapped in my district. And I would say that, you know, as I'm thinking about it, and I have to go back and really look at the figures, but in looking at a couple of, of, say, the properties along Juval, you know, one of, one of the properties that I just looked up was, let's see, about thirteen hundred and, thirteen hundred and six square feet. So a four-story building next to a one-story cottage of thirteen hundred and six square feet is certainly going to be pretty, pretty dominating. I think an eight thousand square foot property next to a thirteen hundred square foot cottage is also going to be pretty transformational. And so I guess I just don't, I would just say that my characteristic, my, I, I would too appreciate the models. I think they are very illustrative of what some of these changes will feel like in the areas where they've been mapped in the central city. I wanted to ask a couple of quick questions. Mr. Parks, you said a couple times, if one is doing affordable, income-restricted housing. And I just want to match that with what we talked about yesterday. It's my understanding that, that you actually, that all of these entitlements are accessible within, within areas that are not in the equity overlay without actually constructing units there. It's all fee and loo. That there are no requirements to have onsite affordable housing in RM1 or R4. And so these entitlements are, you said a couple times, if someone, you can access these entitlements if someone is doing income-restricted housing. And it's my understanding that's no longer, that is not the case. You're just, in those cases, doing a fee.
So these were illustrations of models that we're providing onsite, right? So it shows you how much, how big the building might be if those units are provided onsite.
But that's not the requirement. There's no requirement to have those onsite.
Okay. And so if they're not, then, then as you look at these, as you look at the massings of the buildings on the site in the street view, right, you, you could look at that and say, that's a, well, that's, that's what eight units could look like next to the single-family house. And it could also be, what we know is that if it weren't onsite and it were four units, there would be four bigger units, but that's how big a building would be.
I guess my, my point is, I don't, I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding our conversation from yesterday, you can build what you've modeled. Whether or not you have onsite affordable housing, there's no long, there's not a requirement to have onsite housing.
That's correct.
So all of these entitlements that you've provided are accessible with an affordable housing contribution from four to eight or from six to ten. So could you give us a sense of, for some of these models, like say on page thirty and on page thirty-five, what the affordable housing contribution would be for each of those? And we can come back to that if it, if it'll take a little time. But I think that's one of the things that I'm grappling with. It's just because it's a calculate, because there's no onsite, you can't point to a number of units, it's really going to be a fee. I'd like to better understand exactly what that fee would be for the model shown on thirty and the model shown on thirty-five. And I think there was a request yesterday that encompasses this. But I would like, I think in the first draft, we had potentially some indication of the number of units that had been mapped for RM1 and the number of units that had been mapped for R4. And I would request that we get that for the updated maps, the number of units mapped for, zoned for RM1, the number of units zoned for R4 in this draft by council district. I think that'll help us, you know, as we put this alongside the models, really help us to understand where these, where we could be seeing these models and, and what is around it so that we can kind of better assess what that will, how compatible those resulting structures will be with the existing housing stock that actually people are living in and including lots of renters. And then I guess, lastly, in terms of some of these models, for two hundred, the model on thirty at two hundred square feet, the model on page, I think there was one at six hundred. Mr. Parks, I think you made the comment that in some cases, like for example on page thirty, you might be able to design it in such a way to get more than two hundred square feet. you might be able to design it in such a way to get more than two hundred square feet. I guess I'm wondering if, if in the research that you've done or in other, in other cities, if you're noticing that families with children are able to live in units that are two hundred square feet, six hundred square feet. And my guess is that a lot of these resulting units are gonna be too small to families with kids. And that, and that's something we need to be thinking about as we think about some other competing city goals that we've struck, which is to try to support our network of neighborhood schools by having family, family-friendly housing. Which typically is, in my guess, is probably larger than two hundred square feet, six hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet typically.
So again, we were asked to show maximized scenarios. And so, um, this is sort of the maxed-out version of the number of units on the smallest minimum lot size, right? And using the FARs, uh, in the previous cover, the intention of the model is just to illustrate what is a potential configuration of providing eight units, uh, on that five thousand square foot lot. It does show some parking, right? So for example, uh, if this was an area where, uh, near transit and no parking was required, more of that area could have been used for, uh, to go into the units. And so there might be a mix in the development of eight units that could utilize a module of a microunit and, uh, have a larger unit or a couple of other larger units in this configuration. On page thirty.
I don't think has, has parking, but you're saying the unit on thirty-two does, and so could be, that could be designed. Those, those units might be able to be bigger if you eliminated the parking.
So again, the one on page thirty-two is at the median lot size of eight thousand square feet. The other one is at the minimum lot size in the zone of five thousand square feet. So obviously, if you have a much smaller site, um, how much each unit can be if you're trying to achieve more units on the site, um, uh, gets limited. And that's what we're trying to demonstrate of, you know, these, that one can buy these two hundred square foot modules and assemble them and create buildings from them. And so in this case, this was an example of a, of a product that's available. And, uh, in other markets, um, they, they get assembled into buildings. And in this case, we assembled them into something that would be sort of a house scale, but would provide multiple unit opportunities.
Do you have any model, do you have any, um, other perspectives of this modeling? On, especially I was interested in seeing page, the model on page thirty-one and maybe some, thirty-one and maybe some of the others, um, from kind of front on. So as if I'm standing in front of, standing in front of those units with the new construction and the existing housing. Do you have, do you have any that show it not sort of a street angle? And I'm looking at all of them in front, but just right, so that I can get a sense of what those look like?
We could.
And maybe, and you know, potentially feel like from?
At, you know, so, in it, like in what we describe as an elevation drawing. So it would just be as if you were looking straight on at, at the building, right? Right? And so, and, and we could do that. I can tell you that if you do that and then you put it next, do the elevation of the building adjacent to it, it isn't, um, anything, it's not the way that we, it's not the way that we see the world. I mean, it's the way that architects draw things sometimes. But it isn't a, it isn't a realistic depiction of what is the relationship? How do we, how do we experience and understand the space? So, I mean, we can certainly provide those drawings. But the reason why this approach to explain, uh, sort of the understanding, the mass and the scale and the building relationship with the street and other buildings, is it, it most closely resembles how you would actually experience that in the way that your eye sees and understands space.
I guess I'm thinking that straight-on view, I appreciate that, and obviously you have a wider range of expertise on that. And so I, I appreciate the point you raised. I'm thinking about what it might feel like to be in that thirteen hundred and six square house. You know, if you had a building of eight thousand square feet on either side of you. And so I think it's helpful for the public to, to see a couple ranges of, of the models, of the perspective of these models, just to, to, um, better, to better assess, um, what that'll, what, what that impact would be like. Anyway, thank you for doing all this work.
So one of our colleagues has asked if we could take a short break? Anybody wanna take a five-minute break? All right, let's take a five-minute break, but literally five minutes. Let's be back here at eight after. All right, we're back to a quorum. Uh, I think that somebody had a definition of attic in the Development Code.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, councilmembers. Aneah Johnson, Development Services Department. Councilmember Alter, to answer your earlier question, uh, the definition of attic, which the Land Development Code in twenty-five-two, excuse me, twenty-five-twelve-two-forty-one adopts by reference the International Residential Code, twenty-fifteen version. Chapter two, section R202 definitions. Attic is the space between the ceiling, uh, between the ceiling beams of the top story and the roof rafters.
Is there a height limit?
Not in the definition.
So I can call a third story an attic and it doesn't count against my FAR?
Uh, no, because if it, if it qualifies as a story, it's not an attic.
Okay, then, how do I differentiate between a story and attic?
So if it has, so if it has walls and a top plate, then it's a, it's a story. Um, if it is, if it does not, it's an attic. Basically, you have, it needs to either be shed roof, mansard, or gabled roof to, to qualify as, as an attic space.
Okay, so somewhere else stories defined then? Cause your attic definition.
Story is, story should also be further defined in there, and I can try to find that. The LDC does define, sir.
If someone could just send me both of those definitions, so we can find them easily, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, we can certainly send those over.
Thank you.
Continuing on, um, as, this is really helpful, and to see the drawings are really helpful, cause I think it answers a lot of questions that, that people are asking in the community. Uh, and I recognize that as different people look at the drawings, different people are gonna take different things away from them and draw different conclusions. And that different people are gonna prioritize different information over other information. And that's part of, you know, democracy and, and having everybody engaged in talking about this kind of thing. For what it's worth, for me, when I'm trying to compare relative size of buildings, rather than comparing the size of an existing home to what someone can build next to that home under the new code, which might be quite a variance depending on how big or small that existing building is, much more relevant to me is what could be built on that lot under the existing code versus what could be built on that lot under the new code. So if I have, uh, uh, a bungalow that has thirteen hundred square feet, under the existing code, if someone bought my neighbor's property and tore it down and built something, it's gonna be bigger than my thirteen hundred square feet, most likely, what we're seeing in the marketplace. Um, I'd wanna know what could be built next to me under the existing code if we didn't change anything versus what could be built next to me under the new code. That would be a much more relevant number for me, cause that's what's changing. And then, um, uh, I know that, um, but there's real important debate we need to have on, on how much density or number of units we're going to have on streets and different streets and residential streets and how we, how we treat those. And I look forward to, to that conversation. Cause I think it's one we need to have and make sure that we're doing it, we're doing it right. Uh, but I, for one, am, am okay with the exceptions being given when affordability is being achieved, uh, not only onsite, but also from contributions to the, to the housing fund. Uh, in fact, in many cases, I think that's probably a, a better result to achieve, so that we're not trying to, to measure or police or watch scattered stray individual units. And so that you can, uh, collect, uh, a presence or a critical mass of, of, of units that reflect affordability, uh, in an area. Uh, so I think it's important that we calibrate it so that people aren't being able to, use a fee and lieu to avoid paying their fair share of, of what is the, the increased yield. Uh, but, but I, for one, come down, uh, on that side, I'm happy we're giving the exception in those areas where we're trying to encourage those kinds of contributions. Thank you. Anybody else wanna address this area before we go on to the next presentation? Let's go to the next presentation.
Um, large heating, planning, and zoning. Um, so I'm gonna take you.
Mayor, sorry. I, I did have one question scribbled down that I had before the break. So to be very clear though, the current code that you, sorry, the current code, the code that you just recently published, um, allows for thirteen hundred square foot minimum on, on the, on a unit in the R2 zone. So you, you're always allowed thirteen hundred square feet regardless of the FAR. And so on a, um, so on a standard lot, you can always do a thirteen, two sides of a duplex at thirteen hundred square feet.
Correct. And, um, the sixty-five hundred square foot lot is where those, those two units at thirteen hundred reached point four. So the thirteen hundred per unit allows for slightly more space, uh, under sixty-five hundred square foot lots.
And something to think about is once you cross that sixty-five hundred square foot lot, then, uh, there isn't necessarily an incentive to the second unit, but with the preservation incentive. I mean, there might be an incentive to the second unit if it's more marketable to sell or rent two thirteen hundred square foot units as opposed, or, or to, or to do two units as opposed to having those, that same square footage in one building. But the, um, but there might not be, there's not a square footage incentive. There is an impervious cover incentive associated with that. Um, and then there is the preservation incentive. On those larger lots, it might be easier to add two units. And so that incentive exists. Uh, I've just heard in the community some folks saying that we've gotten rid of the incentive to go to duplex on the square footage side. And on lots lower than sixty-five hundred square feet, as a matter of fact, there still is a, a square footage incentive. And on lots that are larger, there is impervious cover incentive and likely a square footage one if you'd use the preservation bonus. Something that I might want to keep looking at is, um, if when you go over that sixty-five hundred square feet, if there's anything else that we want to, to look at. But I just want, when folks look at the FAR table, to not think that we're continuing to incentivize big McMansions as opposed to duplex, because that thirteen hundred square foot, always having the thirteen hundred square feet per unit is a duplex over McMansion incentive. I just think it's important for folks to hear that when they're looking at the new draft.
Thank you. Uh, large heating, planning, and zoning. Um, so I'm gonna walk you through some of the, the models that we've had done by, um, some outside architects, uh, to look at the, the more intense multi-unit zones and the mixed use in the main street zones. Um, this is kind of expanding upon, uh, the public testing where we modeled some of these zones. But, uh, as you know, there's lots of new zones in the code. And we wanted to look at more, more, um, likely market outcomes of these zones on different lot sizes. So that was the main goal of, of these drawings. Um, and so our first lot is about a five-acre lot. It's a deep lot, so it represents something you might find, um, along a corridor. And, um, in this scenario, uh, there's, the lot is constrained by an easement on one side and, and floodplain in a critical water quality zone on the back of the lot. So under the RM3 zone, um, which is one of our medium-density multi-unit zones, um, on this lot size, there would be allowed a hundred and eighty-five units. The feedback that we received was, um, with that number of units, you're not likely to build a structured parking, um, in a wrap-style building. So it would be most likely that they would build, uh, garden-style apartments. Um, and with, with that kind of building type constraint, they would only build three stories. Um, and then kind of how much surface parking you can provide, uh, becomes another constraint on the site. Um, this, this model is also showing parkland dedication, um, at the front of the lot. So between the parkland dedication, um, and the environmental constraints on the back of the lot, they didn't reach their maximum, um, unit yield. Um, and so those were the major constraints in this model. We also wanted to, um, model MU5, which is the most intense mixed use zone along the corridor. Um, and we modeled this both under base entitlements with compatibility, often on deep, deep corridor lots or lots that are, um, located elsewhere. They might have, uh, residential behind, and the, the hundred-foot compatibility would apply, um, based on the draft code. So this is an example of showing, um, this lot with compatibility on the, on the rear. Uh, but they were still able to get to their max unit per acres with a structured parking in the wrap-style building. Um, so the dwelling units per acre was the main constraint in this scenario. They didn't reach their impervious cover or their maximum height. And in, um, in most of the models, we're showing an average unit size of eight hundred square feet. Um, that would be a mix of studios to two and three bedrooms ranging from six hundred and seventy square feet to eleven hundred square feet. With the average unit size being eight hundred square feet in these models. Um, and I'm gonna let Aneah kind of use this as an example to talk about some of the improvements, um, in the new code. In these zones, they're very similar, um, entitlements-wise, as far as dwelling units per acre, FAR, and impervious cover to our current zoning with additional entitlements available through the bonus. Um, but Aneah's gonna talk about some of the more like procedural or site development standards and, uh, building form standards that, um, are improvements over the current code.
Good afternoon, once again, Aneah Johnson, Development Services Department. Some of the things that, that are, uh, what we feel are improvements or enhancements, uh, in the new draft of the code versus current code are that, uh, density calculations are, are much simplified. It's, it's, uh, we speak in simple terms, at least once we get to the, uh, the RM and the MU and the MS districts. We speak in simple terms of dwelling units per acre. In today's code, you have the amount of site area in square footage that is required for every efficiency, the amount of site square footage that is required for every one bedroom, and also required for every two-plus bedroom unit. It is, it, you can argue that it, that it disincentivizes larger, uh, or not larger units, but uni-, multi-unit, uh, multi-bedroom units. But even beyond that argument, it simply is a time-consuming and tedious calculation to perform. So we've simplified that to simply dwelling units per acre, uh, of site area regardless of the unit type that is, that is being proposed. Another thing that we see in the RM districts is there's, there's no longer an exemption uh, from your building placement standards for residential districts or residential developments. In today's subchapter E, if your zoning district is a purely residential zoning district, meaning a multifamily district or a single-family district, your project is exempted from the building placement standards of subchapter E. So there's, there's nothing to help enhance the pedestrian experience as you walk along the sidewalk, along the front of the property. In the new code, um, we do have those building placement standards, the, where the building needs to be brought up to the front of the property and, and, uh, take up forty percent of that total frontage area. to be brought up to the front of the property and take up 40% of that total frontage area. Also, if you can't do 40, a full 40%, we have the active private frontages that help to- if it's not a- if it's not a big frontage, it's got to be a great frontage, in other words. Those things help enhance the pedestrian experience in town. The compatibility height step back provisions within the proposed code offer very similar considerations in the immediate vicinity of that shared property line, yet they are much simplified under the proposed code. It's two simple zones and then we don't have the final zone that steps up one foot for every 10 feet. It's from 0 to 50, you get this tall. From 50 to 100, you get this tall. And beyond 100, you can go to the max height of your zoning district. A much simpler way of affecting a very similar outcome. In our MU districts, we allow a mix of residential and non-residential uses by right within the district without the property owner having to go through a time-consuming and expensive rezoning process to add the MU to the zoning string. In today's base code, outside of, you know, special districts like PUDs or transit oriented districts, there are no districts where by right you can do mixed use. You have to have that MU qualifier, which requires going through the zoning process in order to achieve that. We have these MU districts and the MS districts in the proposed code, which will allow that mix of uses. It doesn't require that if someone wants to be all commercial, they can be, but they are allowed to incorporate residential into that mix without having to go for expensive time-consuming rezoning. Another thing is from R4 and above, all zoning districts are eligible for NHCD affordability bonuses. Whereas in today's world, unless you are in the central business district, downtown, the downtown zones, in the waterfront overlay, in a transit oriented district, those are the only areas where the NHCD bonuses are truly available. Outside of, of course, the affordability unlocked that was recently passed this past year, but now they are built into the individual zoning districts than the code. And with that, I'll open it to questions and/or pass it back over to Laura to continue. I think she's got some more slides.
So a lot of the stuff that Aneah talks about applies to all zoning districts in the new code. So as we continue to go through these scenarios, this was MU5 under base entitlements. And then in Council Direction during first reading, there's- it said to waive compatibility if the project was taken in part of the affordable bonus program. So this next scenario gives you an example of a similar type development if the compatibility is waived on the back of the lot. But due to the some easement constraints of the lot, the main difference is that they've- there's just been townhomes added to the rear of the lot and another story added to the building. And so with unlimited density being a part of the bonus, the project was able to get up to about 64 units per acre. The last scenario that we modeled on this five acre site was a main street, but with office uses. You know, we've modeled a lot of residential. And the main constraint on this was the height. So with this building type, you could add another floor, but with the 65 feet in height and the typical four to four heights on an office, they're only provided three stories of office above an active ground floor main street along the front of the lot. And additionally, if you were going to add office, you would probably add more parking. And so they've somewhat reached their limit of impervious cover and parking to be provided. So sometimes in that case, parking, the amount of parking that can be provided acts as a limiter of the local space on the land. The next scale that we looked at was acre sites. And we looked at some of the less intent zones on acre sites. So this is RM2, which is, you know, the lowest dwelling unit per acre's multi-unit zone that we have. And this development really hits the impervious cover and the FAR and the height pretty reaches the max of all of those. And the unit sizes range from 2,300 square feet to 4,000 square feet. So this is a townhome style development on this site. And the units are large and the units per acre is under what's allowed. So you could also imagine a similar scale of building, but providing more smaller units. We also looked at a residential scenario under MU3, both base and bonus entitlements. And this is another situation where they got close to the maximum entitlements with height impervious cover and dwelling units per acre. With the bonus, because of the construction type, it's easier on a smaller lot, it's less likely that you'd have structured parking or tuck under parking. So they were able to add some more units and extra floors under the bonus scenario. But because there wasn't enough space on impervious cover to add more parking on the site, that really proved to be the limiter for the bonus in this scenario. The last site that we looked at was about a quarter acre site. And we looked at two uses under the MU2 zone. Now, the MU2 zone was created to provide neighborhood commercial properties. In the current code and the current zoning map, you sometimes have really intense commercial zones such as CS or GR on small lots within a neighborhood. And they're constrained by compatibility today. But there's not really a kind of a medium sized commercial zone that's more appropriate for these smaller lots in the current code. So the MU2 zone is something that was created to fill that need. And so this is a live work scenario and you can get four live work units on a quarter acre lot. And so this would be, you know, located potentially next to other two and three story commercial and residential buildings in the neighborhood. This is the same zone, but just showing a commercial, a commercial building that could be retail on the bottom and office on the top. And this, to achieve this development, it's under the minimum parking ratio. So it would have to be located close to a corridor or along a corridor where it would have to not meet its minimum parking requirement. To meet the minimum parking requirement on this lot, you would most likely get a one story building if you were going to redevelop the lot. And so those are all the commercial models that we have had created. And then I'll give it back to Peter, who's going to talk a little bit about compatibility.
So the good thing about looking at the code and the map at the same time is that as changes to the map occur, it allows us to reexamine how the standards in the code are working and vice versa. And as we've done this, in some of the changes of the transition areas and the policy direction on where to map the transition areas, there are adjacencies and proximities that are raising some questions for us that we'd just like to share with you some examples and also discuss some possible solutions. So this is labeled compatibility adjacent to R4. In the middle of the picture, you see what might be an existing preserved house and behind it, a duplex that could be built under the new code if it was an R4. And then just to the right of it is a new building potentially under R4. To the left is a main street zone and the possibility of buildings to 65 feet. And right now, the way the current draft works is the main street or the mixed use zone that would be on the corridor has a zero setback in a side interior adjacency or rear adjacency to an R4. Council Direction was to not have compatibility triggered when the transition zones meet corridors. But we have a couple of situations now that are a little different than we had from the mapping before. So for example, we have more adjacencies. I mean, we have these kind of adjacencies of R4. And in this case, you can see that it's- the R4 has a required setback of five feet on the side, but the more intensive zone has no responsibility and a setback. And so we studied this and here's what it could look like if this building were to get a bonus and could go up to 90 feet. So that was an adjacency that we think needs to be addressed. And one option, a simple option, is to say, well, in this case, the main street, the mixed use zone would have to have the same setback as the R4, right? And if that was the case, then it would look like this. So it would go from a zero setback to a five foot setback. So you can see it's different, but I think the team feels that there's still some, a better transition that could be achieved. Now, right now, the compatibility as it's drafted, if one were to apply compatibility as it is proposed today, that envelope would look something like this. So there would be a 30 foot setback from the property line and a couple of steps as Aneah was describing. The trouble with this, and you can see it here, is that if compatibility were to be applied in this situation, there's a lot of development that gets lost on the corridor. A lot of units, a lot of capacity. Here's a sort of extrusion of it. It also would end up creating an envelope of a building that no one would build, right? I mean, while I could get that additional height, I'm not going to build a skinny 20 foot long building like that. So here's a case where applying the existing compatibility or the current draft compatibility standard in this situation is too much. And it really is counter to what Council Direction was about transition areas and So this is, yeah, so this is something that we'd like to discuss a little bit further with you and perhaps get some direction. We've worked, we're thinking about some other possibilities. The other reason that addressing compatibility in the draft today is important is with the changed mapping approach, we have more adjacencies of R2 and R3s to corridors, which means that compatibility is now invoked on the corridors. And the compatibility as it exists in the draft, as you can see, is pretty reductive. So again, this is just one of those things of changing the approach to the mapping reveals some things in terms of what has some impacts on the calibration. So what we'd like to do is to actually explore compatibility as it's drafted today and to see how we might find a better middle ground to address some of these adjacency issues. And I think that's it for our presentation. Colleagues?
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it points to the fact that there needs to be some adjustment. And because of the situation that you showed, that it's not something that's really workable where you have that tall a building that close to the smaller structure. So it makes sense to me, and I'd like to hear what you all could come back with in terms of adjust, potential adjustment to the compatibility. Because if I'm hearing you right, just adding an additional five feet on the setback really doesn't get us to where we need to be. So it sounds like it needs another look at compatibility because of those adjacencies. So I'd be interested in hearing what y'all come up with. And I assume that would be something that you'd have for us for third reading? Is that the thinking or which else timeline?
Yeah, I think that would be a third reading. I mean, if-
If you can do it faster, that's great. But I mean, I'd rather have it for second reading, but I don't know if that's timely.
I imagine that third reading is more realistic because we would want to come back with a fully vetted and modeled compatibility option that we could show you how it would look and work. And providing it by second reading, I don't think we'd have time to fully vet it internally prior to bringing it to y'all.
Okay. So help me make sure that I understand this. One of the reasons that we had transition zones was to ensure that we didn't have compatibility standards that reduced the yield that we could get along corridors. Because it was in the corridors that we were realizing the overwhelming new supply in density. And it was on the corridors, we were adding new people that would help make transit work. It was in those corridor areas that we were getting the most significant movements toward walkability in our city. So we had zones, the RM1 and the R4, that stopped compatibility and provided some transition between what was happening on the corridors and what was happening inside. My understanding is that what you're pointing out is that we also gave it the direction in many areas of the city, because of the equity overlay, to say that we did want to have the same transition zones in those areas, take the transition zones out. But when we took the transition zones out, we took away the thing that was letting us actually get the density on the corridors. I guess there are two ways to deal with that, three ways. One, we could say we're fine with the way it is, recognizing that now we don't block the compatibility and we end up with these odd shaped buildings. Another one would be to say, fashion for us new compatibility standards that allow for something more reasonable to be built in the corridor. And the third area would be to go back in and say, the third way to do it, go back in and say, put back in the compatibility blockers so that we can still get the development that we wanted to get to on the corridors. And then that would require us then to take another look at what the transition area needs to be between the corridors where we want to get the density and the neighborhoods where we need some kind of transition to go there. And I think as we have this conversation, it's going to be important for the council to consider both of those. I mean, my instinct is not to fashion the compatibility because that cuts against the privacy of the goal in the city to increase the density along the corridors. It would be to take another look at the transition areas and figure out how to make them best work with the increased density in- with the increased density and supply that we wanted to get along those corridors.
Mayor, can I speak to that?
Hang on, I think Peter was giving away the punch.
Yes, those certainly are the choices. I think the team feels revisiting the calibration of compatibility as it exists in the draft right now and in the diagram we just showed, the way that it's calibrated now is still pretty, it's not as reductive as your current code compatibility standards, but it is, it is still pretty reductive and impactful along the corridor. So, the, the, the thought is that maybe we could revisit how compatibility is calibrated so that it doesn't have the same kind of impactful reduction to capacity on those corridor parcels. But it does provide some transition to the residential, adjacent residential scale, house-scale residential zones. Okay. Anyone else want to talk before we go back to Anne? Leslie?
Well, that's what the compatibility was all about, was to make sure that we don't have really extreme examples and that we lose human scale in these areas of town. And so, I appreciate that our consultants and our staff want to work on this a little bit more to try to reduce the chances that this will happen. And I think we all agree that we're not painting with a broad brush so that everything is all the same all around our city. We do have to acknowledge we've got unique circumstances, and I think we need to be prepared to address unique circumstances so that people aren't hemmed in. So, I appreciate the additional efforts that sound like should be coming our way. I'd like to see what Peter brings back.
Anne, no, Natasha?
Yes, I just, I wanted to go back to something you guys said earlier that it will, well, has definitely inspired the comments I'll make subsequent to. What was it, 30% of our current housing stock was built in the last 30 years? If I remember correctly, that's what you said. And then that just leads me to think how quickly our population is growing. And so, when I have this thought in my mind's eye about cost-benefit, I keep thinking about yield, about capacity. We need housing. And I think to some degree, thinking about compatibility from an aesthetic purpose as opposed to a use purpose might just be to our detriment from a capacity perspective. So, I just wanted to go on record as saying, I recognize, you know, for some folks, having a tidy building next to a big building is jarring, but personally, it doesn't bother me if I recognize that we've taken the opportunity to get as much, by the way, capacity as we can get. I think about larger cities and some examples of teeny-tiny buildings next to really big buildings. And it, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, does not offend me. And so, I just wanted to make certain to go on record having said that.
Okay, Catherine Casar?
And may I speak to Councilmember Harper Madison?
Okay.
That is part of the reason we brought this forward to council today is because we would like council direction on whether, looking at, as Mayor Adler pointed out, looking at the transition zones again or looking at compatibility or which direction council would like us to, as staff, to analyze. I think that would be really helpful information from second reading for us to look at in third reading so that we can do the proper analysis to, so that you can get the code that is most helpful for your end goals.
And it's probably pretty clear that some of my colleagues and I have completely different perspectives on the matter, in which case to come to a consensus to determine what it is that we're directing staff to do might be something that we as a body take some time to think through because personally, I don't think it's necessary that you go through and do that exercise. But, you know, I want to be respectful and collegial and recognize that we don't all have, share an opinion. That's a part of the diversity of thought that makes the body beautiful. So, thank you.
Greg?
And thanks for bringing this up. And I'm going to look at it now that you've brought it here and I'm sure we can take a vote on second reading or do whatever it is that we need to do. There is also, was there not also some amendments that if you took advantage of that bonus, that the compatibility does not apply?
That's right.
And so, in the cases where, and all of those corridors have a bonus. And so, and so, in each and every one of those corridors, if they take advantage of the bonus, whether it's zoned R4 right behind the corridor or not, the compatibility is waived.
Yes.
Now, in some cases, they may not take the bonus, and I think in those cases, let me think through the best way to handle it. But I think that's an important bit of context because that was an amendment that was passed, is every corridor has a bonus. And if you take advantage of the bonus, the compatibility is waived. So, we should think about that also as we think through
Absolutely.
what the compatibility should look like.
I have forgotten that.
And most of those corridors, I think, where there is not as much transition area are primarily commercially zoned and getting the dash Q, which requires use of the bonus.
Paige?
My line of thinking is very close to where Natasha is with this. When I look at these buildings next to each other, my home looks more like the one on the left, and I think that's human scaled. And if we're going to be smart about climate change and housing for people, I think corridors is where we really do need to have that capacity for housing. So, I'm in line with where Natasha's thinking. If you're taking notes.
Okay, Allison?
I would support looking at it to improve it. But Councilmember Casar's remarks suggest to me that maybe we should just be waiving compatibility in general only if you do a bonus and in only that circumstance, and we'd probably get a lot more affordable housing that way.
Anne?
To my mind, you know, I think that it is important to address how buildings interact with each other. And I'm not offended by this either, but I'm recognizing that there are interactions between buildings and people living in spaces that impact their health, their ability to sleep, sound, all of those kinds of things. And so, to the scenario that we've got right now is zero lot line and five feet wrapping around a residential house. And to me, that doesn't make any sense. And so, I'm open to, you know, many different ways to address that. I mean, basically, you've got two ways with a setback or, you know, with, you know, the space between the houses or with some kind of step back of the building. And I really don't, you know, I think that there's options for how you do that. And I also agree with everyone that we need to get the density along the corridor. But I don't think we have to sacrifice addressing the situations that we have where we've got small homes like that next to 10-story buildings. We have to address the space between them. And I'm not offended either at all, but I do recognize the interact, the issues that come with those kind of interactions. I get a lot of calls from my district about things like dumpsters, things like health and noise, ability to sleep, all that kind of stuff. So, we just need to do a little bit of adjustment here. And I'd like to see what, what our staff comes up with in whatever way they think is appropriate. Because I do think a zero lot line on the side and the back of a residential property, I don't think that makes sense. And I think we need to do something about that.
Okay, Peter, is your light on to speak?
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Further discussion? Any discussion on any topic while we have our folks here? We've allotted an additional hour in our work session. So, now would be time to raise other issues if you wanted to do that as well.
I likely will have some, some more content-based questions, but I hate to take us back to the scheduling question, but I just need to be, we're trying to communicate with our constituents about when they can come and speak, and I need to just verify a couple of things. So, as we talked about yesterday, we are scheduled now for three meetings, February 11th, February 12th, February 13th. As I understood our conversation yesterday, we're posted for three readings, but we can also take them in two readings.
I think that the wise thing to do would be to take, just take them in three meetings.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, what was the other part of my question? Okay, and then the other question that's been asked is whether there's any possibility that we would be voting before February 13th.
We are set. We could potentially take a vote on the 11th, 12th, or 13th, yes.
And I guess I'm asking this body, if that's, I mean, I understood we can, but we will be...
I'll have a better feel for it, I'm in that when I see the amendments that are posted on Friday.
Mayor?
Okay, but then we know, then we might have people who can only come on the 12th. I mean, if, I guess that's the, that's the upshot. If we're, if it's possible, we may vote. I thought on one of, I thought I had seen on one of the posts, and it may just be that we added it in, that it said, "Meeting and possible vote on the 13th." Possible that we may vote earlier, then we really need to tell our constituents, "If you intend to speak to the council, please come on the 11th. If there's a possibility, we may vote on the 11th or on the 12th." I mean, if we're, if we're telling people they'll have an opportunity to come and speak at one of those three meetings, but we've already taken the vote, that would be obviously an issue.
Obviously, if we're not meeting on the last two days, then there won't be an opportunity to speak. And I think that we are trying to encourage people to come on the first day to speak to us. We had had the option of having a public hearing day just to let people speak, but everyone couldn't attend it. And some of the people who couldn't attend didn't want to have that take place. And that pushed us to where we are. But right now, we're set to take action on Tuesday. If we can't, we'll have the meeting on Wednesday. If we can't, we'll have the meeting on Thursday. If we can, then we'll set a meeting for the, for the following week.
To be clear, I think some of us had, number one, when it was, when the dates were presented, I know there were some conflicts with the day-long meeting. It was also clear that the staff said they hadn't received direction to have a one-day public hearing. So, I mean, we had multiple options, including scheduling it for a day when everybody could be present. That wasn't, the inability to be there wasn't a request that we not have a public meeting or a day of a public meeting. Had we been able to push it back to another day or schedule it earlier, we certainly could have had a day-long public meeting. But in any case, I guess that answers the question. We could be voting, we really need to tell our constituents that we could be voting on this as early as February 11th, next Tuesday.
Unless the will of the council is otherwise, yes, we're set that way. Now that you have brought up, let me get to you in just one second. Now that you have brought up the logistics, I understand that staff's going to send something out that speaks to the, to the points that I had raised just in terms of giving the public notice of sign-up times so that they know when sign-up times will be for those as well as the length of time that speakers have, all consistent with the post that I had put up last week. Basically, we, the way it's working right now is that we're trying to encourage people to come on Tuesday to speak. That also gives people a chance to speak before we deliberate, which I think would be the most helpful, for at least me, allowing people a total of two minutes to be able to speak with no donated time, unless there are more people that sign up to speak, in which case we'll take 120 minutes divided by the number of speakers. But in no event will there be less than a minute for everybody to speak, even if that means extending past the 120 minutes. On Wednesday, it's the same thing except it's one minute instead of two minutes. The sign-up time for the meeting will be beginning the day before for people to sign up. And sign-up will be cut off as we, at the scheduled time for the meeting to begin is when sign-ups will be cut off for that day's meeting. Leslie?
Well, I was just sitting there thinking that if, if we are wanting to urge people to come on Tuesday, the 11th, to speak to us, why don't we dedicate that to the public hearing? And then we can just say that's when the public hearing is, and then we can do our deliberations on the 12th and the 13th. It may actually turn out that way anyway, but it would, it would acknowledge that the public was looking for a public hearing and we didn't schedule it, but we could, we could schedule one.
Paige?
I mean, people can still come and speak. I mean, that's, they're still going to be able to come and speak to us. So, if we get to a point where we want to start deliberations, I think we should, we should get on with it, you know? It's been years in the making. This is our second round. I think it's time to get into this debate and to really iron through some of this stuff. And I'm glad that people will get to come and speak, but I don't know that saying there's a day we won't deliberate is helpful at this, at this point in the game.
Okay, Greg?
I agree, and I think sometimes folks that come and speak appreciate the opportunity, if they stay, to watch us deliberate. So, if there's time, I would start deliberating then. And, you know, the last time we got through 199 amendments in three days, hopefully, there's, I anticipate we'll have fewer amendments on second reading and potentially fewer days, I would hope. And then also, as it relates to today, I know we're scheduled through five, but we've, from these presentations, it's created a lot of ideas and things to work on. And so, if we break at 4:20 or 4:30, I'd be happy to go continue working on this. I'm open to what other people's thoughts and needs are.
Okay, Allison?
I'm hearing from a lot of constituents, and they want to be able to speak to the council about their concerns. And I do not believe that one minute, if that's where it would land, or two minutes, is sufficient for them to be able to communicate to us. So, I think that we are artificially constraining people's opportunity to share their concerns on this. There's barely been enough time for people to digest the new draft. And yes, we have been working on it a long time, but there are a lot of changes in it. And I think that our community expects to have the opportunity, at the very least, to be able to share their concerns and express how they're feeling about the changes that are being proposed to, for many of them, what's their most important financial asset. And I think that we need to provide that opportunity to listen. We unfortunately don't think can limit it to one day because by the state's laws, we have to let people speak to us on every, every day, and so, that's what we will do. But if we are going to be done quickly and artificially cut it off at 120 minutes on the first day, I'm fairly uncomfortable with that approach.
Bill?
I'm, I'm ready to go ahead and I support my colleague on getting this done. You know, I ran on my, on my campaign is to get this code and support density in our city, especially in our major corridors. I still believe that if we allow the density in our corridors first, and I think the development in the building is going to concentrate on the corridors because people want to move there because we're going to provide the transit so they can move around this city. You know, right now, with the traffic that we have, it's deplorable. But, you know, there are going to be people, and I just, like in my area where I live at in Cesar Chavez in Holly, you're not going to see that kind of development. We're already met, we're maxed out on our imperious cover. We're not going to be able to build anything. And there may be along the corridors, it's the only other options that we have right now. So, I'm, I'm ready, this has been going on. I feel like it's a lifetime, you know, since 2012, and we've been discussing this. And we took it to a vote, you know, where the voters decided. And, you know, the majority of the people here want to, want to take advantage of the density that we need to solve our housing problem. We've got a lot of people that are moving in here. I have staff that are just, you know, struggling to be able to find any place around here to live. They have to move out further and further and further out. And unless we build these housing, you know, we're, we're telling people that they might have just moved out of the city limit, and I hate to see that.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm also ready to move forward. And I, and I would just say, you know, the, the time that we make for public testimony at City Hall is only one component of the public input that we receive. It tends to advantage folks who live closer to City Hall. It tends to advantage folks that have time and privilege to wait around for their turn to speak. I put as much value in the emails and the phone calls and the town hall meetings that I attend in my district because I will tell you that my constituents have no interest in coming down to City Hall and wait around for hours in order to speak when they can come to my town halls, and I will go to their neighborhoods and have done those things. So, I think it's, it's time to move forward.
Okay, Anne, and then Kathy.
Okay, so, just for clarity, because I'm a little confused about what we're, so, we're going to have, people can come and talk on the 11th.
Yes.
But I wasn't sure I understood what you were saying. But I wasn't sure I understood what you were saying about limiting the time. So, so they could come and speak for two minutes? Is that what we're saying, no matter how many people we have, right?
What I had posted was that, in fact, I think, I think it effectively is... No, what we had said was, because we were trying to make sure that we had enough time to actually deliberate and work on this. So what it says is that we're going to let everybody talk for up to two minutes, assuming that everybody can talk in 120 minutes.
Okay, so...
And if people can't talk in that 120 minutes, then the number would be degrees. But in no event would it be less than a minute.
Okay.
Similar to when we have conversations now, where the first 20 people get to speak for two minutes, and then everybody along the, the next 20 go down to a minute. It would be similar, but a little bit calculated, a little bit differently.
Okay. So what I obje, I, I don't think we should limit our public testimony to two hours. I certainly understand and, and agree with the way we've done things before, where the first X number get two minutes and the next get a minute. But with all due respect to everyone else, I think what, what I'm hearing from everyone is that each of our districts is different. And each of our, of our constituents are impacted differently. There are differences between first and second reading. I think we have to allow people to come and speak. It's quite possible that we'll only have the, the number of people for two hours. But if we have the number of people for two and a half hours or three hours, I think it is totally inappropriate to cut them off. And I really can't agree with that. So I think we need to take, I think we need to tell people the amount of time that they're going to have, you know, and, and then we need to listen to people. And understanding, and I, I respect the differences that people have in their districts. But some of us have districts where people may want to come and talk. And they want to talk to other people, not just to me. I've been talking to them. And so I think it's really important that we allow that to happen. And I hope, I, I hope we'll do that. And anyway, and, and to my mind, this is not about whether we... Well, I, I'll just stop there. I just think it's really important that the public have the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Kathy?
So I think that we should plan on not taking, well, let me just say, because we're all getting emails about this time schedule. And I want to be really clear with my constituents that I don't support this abbreviated timetable. I think it is really wildly impossible for us to digest the changes in second, that have happened between first and second reading. I think it's entirely impossible for me to absorb the changes. As I mentioned earlier, every week I receive individual concerns about individual properties and a request to please explain why they've been zoned this way or why they haven't been zoned another way. You know, I, I, there is a, a very, we are hearing different opinions, and there are diverse views. But I'm just going to go back to something I've said a couple of times today. There are wildly different impacts on different parts of the city with this code. And the central city is far more impacted than other areas. And so I would ask those of you who are very supportive of the code, please, look at the impact on districts other than yours. Because it's largely the changes in the policy that's being advanced aren't impacting your areas. And your constituents may, you may not be hearing from them quite as much. I'm certainly hearing from my constituents because it's going to have a very big impact on my constituents. And so, you know, I want to be very clear with the public and the audience that I, I am hearing you. I'm hearing you from Central Austin beyond the district I represent. I understand this timetable is extremely difficult and that you're having trouble absorbing the changes and that you had very significant concerns with the first reading. And I'm going to do what I can to see if we can get some amendments that I hope address that. But I would support a timetable that allows for deliberation. I, I think we should have public testimony on all three of those days and commit to not voting. But if there is a potential that we're going to vote on February 11th, I certainly support having a concrete amount of time. I think two minutes, given that it's a reduction from our usual three, I think two minutes is, is a better compromise than kind of figuring it out on the spot based on how many people show. And I, and I do think people need time to prepare and, and need some certainty to how much time they're going to have. You know, ma, many people don't do this a lot, and they need to write a speech before they come down. I remember the first time I came down, you know, I practiced and practiced and practiced. And I think that's true for many of the people who come talk to us. They come down with something written, and they need to know how much time they're going to have. So that's, um, that's where I am on this and would certainly support mu, much more public testimony and really listening. We, yes, this process has gone on a long time. As my colleague said, this is a very different draft than, than the one we saw. There was a, a will and, and a council resolution that several of you brought forward to ask us to delay the process. But it's, it's very clear that, you know, the maps are completely different. There are measures of code, and the text of the code are different. We're not working, we haven't been working with the same drafts for the last multiple years. This is an entirely new draft. And it's much changed since last, since first reading, as indicated by the 100, 100-page staff report summarizing those changes.
Anne?
I have a different topic when you're done with this topic.
I, I would just say that, that what I had fashioned here was actually is more time for people to speak than under our normal rules, which are 20 people with the extended period of time, three minutes in that case, and then everyone else after that at one minute. This provides for an opportunity of, of up to over 100 that we'll get more than one minute of time. But I also believe that, and I concur with, with what Jimmy said, I would urge everyone to, to email in or to call in or come visit council members. And again, this is second reading, so there's also going to be another two months roughly after this before we get back to, to third reading, which I think right now is, they're trying to schedule kind of like the last week in March or thereabouts. So there'll be an additional period of time there. But I do think that, that the community really wants us to, to, to make decisions and to move on. And with the new state laws that are in effect, it makes it perhaps more difficult for, for councils to be able to do that. Because the way we had handled discussion in the past, we, we cannot do. So that was the intent. We obviously can't decide anything today. The time for, for someone to, to move, to handle speaking differently would be when, when we convene that meeting. If the attorneys could take a look and see if there's a way for that to fit within something that's on our agenda on Thursday. I don't know that that's possible, but you might want to take a look at that to see if that's something that someone could make a motion to do it differently than I described. If not, obviously, we're set the following week. Okay. Next topic. Allison?
This is not the next topic. I just want to, you know, reiterate the fact that we have had six business days to review the map changes and the documents. In that six days, we have been in this room, two of the three that we've had so far. And tomorrow, we're on council, which leaves us Friday and Monday if we have nothing else that we're doing besides this. There is not time within that to be able to hold a town hall and explain all of this in a coherent way to constituents who want to hear that. The, the timing for this is not, i, i, it's, it's not fair to say, "Well, this is equivalent to what we hear on another item." This item is not equivalent to a normal item on our agenda. And to treat it as such does not build the trust and the confidence that we need in our community as we ask them to take on bigger and bigger things to improve our city than maybe go beyond this code. And I'm not sure what anyone listening to this conversation will take away about whether they should come on Tuesday. Because I'm afraid that the message that's being sent is that council doesn't care what they have to say. And that is a really sad conclusion for people to walk away with. And that's really what, what I think people will conclude. And I don't believe that's necessarily what my colleagues want to convey. But for the folks who we're hearing from, who are incensed, that is what they will hear from the choices that we are making about how we're setting up the hearing. We are already setting it up that it is on a Tuesday morning with zero opportunity in an evening, zero opportunity on a weekend, in a setup that does not allow colleagues to hold town halls or office hours in a reasonable way where you would actually be able to communicate with folks to help them understand the choices and the options that we have before us.
Jimmy?
I just want to make sure that there isn't confusion being communicated by my colleagues to the public about the decision that is before us and the process that we are following. It's getting harder and harder to believe that, that we are all acting in an honest way and a straightforward way. But I am going to continue to listen to all of the constituents that contact me, all of the emails I've received, all of the meetings that I have attended. And I will continue to refute the misinformation that I hear being spread in the community. And I will continue to believe that none of it is being spread by council members. And I just hope that we all continue with that good faith as we go through this process lest we find ourselves participating in the disruption of this community rather than being the leaders we have been elected to be.
Okay. Changing topics? Anne?
I want to revisit, not, not now, but I want to tee this up and so ask when you might think would be the right time to do this. I, in your post, Mayor, you had mentioned and suggested that we not bring specific map changes this time. And I think you were referencing what we were expecting to happen on third reading. So I think it's important to repeat, to repeat so the public can understand and we can make sure we're still on, all on the same page about what's happening on third reading with regard, regard to the map book process and that sort of thing. So I would like to ask if Tuesday, when we start our process, maybe after the hearing or somewhere in there, that we ask the staff just to repeat for us what that map book process will be on third reading. I think it's, one of the reasons I want to make sure we do that is because there's some written language in the staff report that I don't, it's, it's a shortened version. So it's understandable that it'd be shortened in the report. But it doesn't convey everything we talked about on first reading and necessarily so because it's shorter. So I just want to make sure, I think it's important that we're all on the same page about what the expectation is. And so I would ask that, I don't think it would take a long time, but I would ask that we spend 15 minutes or so, 15, 20 minutes for the staff to go over that process with us again so that we're all on the same page.
I think that would be very helpful if you all would prepare and plan to do that. I think that would be really helpful. I also think that, given the conversations we've had about in the past and the concerns that Councilwoman Kitchen has raised, that you visit with her prior to that, after you have that presentation and your thoughts on it, to make sure that it's addressing the kinds of questions that we would anticipate that Councilmember Kitchen would make based on prior conversations.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. Anything else you guys want to discuss on the code while we're all here? That being the case, we are adjourned at 4:23.